...a face directly at the face to decide would be the south side of the house on Burke Street. So for the Aegean, we were able to relocate this balcony, move it to the front facade, and then it works very nicely, and you've got those drawings and I can go through them again if needed. We weren't able to relocate this one, so on the Aegean, we were able to relocate three balconies. So it's one on each of the typical residential floors, one on the first floor, one on the second, one on the third floor. So the Aegean, that's the revision. We removed this balcony, relocated it to here. On the Baltic, which is on Third Avenue in Burke, at that intersection, so this is Third Avenue, this is Burke, and the house would be directly right here where my cursor is, we were able to relocate both balconies that were facing south, therefore facing the side of that house. So this is the previous plan showing the two balconies, and this is the new plan showing the relocated balcony. So what we've done, we've taken this one, moved it here to the rear. We've taken this one, moved it here to the front. No real effect on the architecture. It actually worked out nicely, and we think it's the benefit, of course, is as the board suggested, that we no longer, especially on this, on the Baltic side, which would be the north side of that house, there are no balcony spaces at all.
That was a total of nine balconies?
So there are three on the Aegean, and six on the Baltic for a total of nine. So that's the, we'll call them four architectural revisions. That's number one of the revisions, which is the relocation of balconies.
So just one moment. So how many do we have left that are actually facing the house?
One on each floor.
So you've got three.
So there are three in total.
Three in total that are now facing the home?
Yeah, and they are, and I should go back to it so I can help better answer you. So that one is right here towards the back of that house.
So you have three that are left?
Correct.
Out of, we started out with...
We started out with 12, removed three.
With 12, when we're down to three.
Yes.
Okay.
We also were able to relocate the air conditioning and condensing unit. There was some concern of their proximity to that house again. So this drawing on the left shows where we were at the previous meeting. Here, they are in terms of location for the Aegean. So we relocated these units to the far side, further away from this house, and these units were able to tuck in a little closer here. So these were moved this way, and these were moved this way. We think, again, addressing one of the concerns.
Is there a side yard, so that balcony that overlooks the house?
Yes.
Is that like, so the balcony ends on the...
There's a side yard separating.
There is a side yard.
Yeah, so where we...
How wide?
I don't recall. I can look it up for you after this. I think it's about six or eight feet. Might be a bit more, but it's substantial, substantially further than the edge of the balcony. The edge of the balcony only continues by the 18 inches. Majority of the balcony is set in the side.
Thank you.
Sure. So for the Baltic, understanding same concerns, these AC condensers are relocated here. So for reference, the house that I had mentioned a couple of times is located here. These AC condensers, which were talked about and discussed at previous meetings, were slid to here, again, further away from the house with less impact, and we think still would be relatively efficient within our building. Another of the architectural changes, and this isn't necessarily change, it was more of a reaction to a comment, one of the comments from the commissioner who's not here tonight, said, "Can we look at another color?" So for specifically the Aegean, and that's where the color question came in, where we had what was called a Navajo tan. It looks yellow here, but it's more of a tan, perhaps something bolder. So this is a bluish color that is something we can provide and is still a material we can source. We leave it to the board to decide if this is a better solution relative to the previous. I'm not sure how I feel about it. Certainly open-minded and happy to listen. So that's the third of the architectural revisions, and the fourth is more of an addition. So previously on the design, we had, as our direct numbering and signage, we had just the number 218, for example, on the Baltic, and 215 for the Aegean. Comment was perhaps we should look at that and add the name of the building too, might be a little bit of a nicer entry point. So what we've done is, and you've got these drawings in front of you, we added the name of each building on each of the signage for the address. And so it was 215 Aegean, which is drawn and shown here, and this is part of your package, and Baltic 216.
And so can you tell me what the, let's say, pick any unit, what is their address?
Depending which building you're in, of course.
You pick a unit, any unit, what's their address?
Anything in the Baltic is 216.
All right, anything in the Baltic is 216, and then unit whatever.
Correct.
Is it 216 Burke, or 216...
It's Third Avenue.
All right, it's 216 Third Avenue, unit...
Correct.
Whatever.
Two, three.
Baltic.
However we decide, whether it's 2A, 2A3, or 123 through 27.
Right, for mail delivery, that's gonna be really tricky.
Yeah, and I think the post office will dictate to us how they want it.
Yes, yes, okay.
And that's it for the four architectural revisions. I tried to keep it short and sweet and easy for me especially, for everyone to understand where we were to where we are. Happy to answer questions.
Anyone?
I have one question. With the move of the balcony in the Aegean, that doesn't approach into the right...
Correct, it does not, not in any case.
It's over, yeah, it's over top of the Burke.
Yeah, so not even, yeah, and on that side, we've got quite a bit of distance for front yard, yeah.
Just double check.
No, understood.
I know that, I'd like to say that I very much appreciate the fact that you were able to move the terraces as we'd asked. I think that that's a great benefit to the homeowner, and as well as the AC units. So that was really, I'm very pleased that those were able to be moved. I don't know if anyone has any comments about the color modification that was requested? Or would you like it to be left as is, or, anyone?
I think, you know, we aren't seeing very much color variation within the district broadly. And I think the concern that we've spoken about previously is that if everything is gray and tan and white, it starts to all become oatmeal, right? And so I think adding a color is, I think would be to a benefit, especially in a beach community where our history is probably a little bit more whimsical than maybe a very talented restrained architect like yourself might prefer a more muted palette, I understand. But, you know, I do think that repeatedly, we're not seeing any color on any buildings. We're seeing gray and white and tan, and so I do think that sort of, it's part of our history. And so that's one way to contextualize the contemporary architecture to our historic roots.
Anyone feel strongly that it should remain any other way?
I'd like to move.
Yeah, okay, well, there you go.
Excellent. Then as, assuming we were approved tonight, we were approved, that's perhaps a condition I can change the other views for the board as well.
The renderings?
Yes.
Why do we, we won't ever see them again.
Yeah, we won't ever see them.
Then this is perfect.
You don't need to update the renderings.
That's great.
Right.
Is there a name for this particular type of building?
Yes. Yeah.
Booth Bay.
Booth Bay, and it's, and Carl and I, the applicant, went through a lot of...
Just for any...
I wonder who gets the job of naming colors. I think it must be just like somebody really... A lot of creativity.
Okay.
Okay, that's the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next witness I have is Mr. Curley, our engineer, and there are two items I can address.
Oh, just this...
Oh.
Yes, we have to open it up for public question, I'm sorry. And to our professionals, any questions, the professionals?
None.
No? Our planning board has already asked questions. I'd like to open it up for the public. Does the public have any questions that they would like to pose to what was presented just now? And has to stay to that discussion.
Hello, my name is Teresa Peterson, Bourdon Avenue, Asbury Park. Nice to see you all. I have a question. What was the reasoning behind moving the condenser units? What was the request of the board, and then what, and then what was the overall, what were we trying to do or accomplish by doing that?
The condensing units, I should talk to the microphone, but the condensing units were originally very close to the house that's in the center. So we were able to move them from there further back while still maintaining a good distance from the building to our east. So it was kind of now between the two buildings, the building two on Burke Street, which is our center, as well as the building to the east. So we thought it's a, we understood the comment, and it's a nice compromise now. So it's separated as much as possible from both buildings.
Okay, was the decibel level of the condenser units in question regarding that, or is this purely for aesthetics?
No, not for aesthetics. It was a way of minimizing any impact that would have. These condenser units are not very loud these days. So it was still, we thought a very simple move, move location, further distance, less than impact.
There's enough to do whatever you can to minimize any noise anywhere.
Exactly right.
So what is the impact if, in fact, the condenser units are moved to the location in which you're suggesting, as a result of the comments, will there be a diminished decibel, like, can you attest to the amount of decibels that it's gonna go down by in terms of that?
No, that's not my field of expertise. I can just speak to locating them and the general understanding that moving it further from a particular location, that two buildings, residential buildings on either side of us will benefit both.
Okay, just wanted to know if the decibels were gonna be within the city's purview, so, in order to manage. Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Yes, good evening, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. The image that's up there right now is pretty relevant to my question. Would the applicant consider strengthening the roof line of these buildings? The cornices seem rather weak, and the eye just kind of glides off the building into the sky. Typically, traditional architecture has a stronger cornice to stop the top of the building. Would that be something that the applicant would be willing to do?
I'm going to object, that's beyond the scope of what we are presenting.
It's an architectural question.
But it's beyond the scope of testimony.
Yeah, we've already had this discussion during prior meetings, and I don't believe that the board brought that up as a request for modifications. At this point, it's already the time has passed.
We just had somebody ask about condensers, where there was no testimony about condensers.
Yes, there was. There was testimony about condensers, I'm sorry.
Please put a bigger cornice on there, thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, all right, next witness.
Thank you.
I believe that you were sworn at prior meetings, and you understand that you're still under oath for this evening.
Mr. Curley, you provided testimony with regard to engineering aspects of this application behalf of the applicant, am I correct?
That's correct.
And you made revisions to your plans based upon comments at the last hearing, am I correct?
That's correct.
And what I'd like to do is go through briefly the revisions that you have made to your plans.
So there were two requests. One had to do with the orientation of, and I'm gonna be pointing at... This is sheet five of the site plan set that was resubmitted.
And the date of the revisions on that as well?
Six twenty twenty-two.
And we'll mark that as age sixteen.
The concern that was voiced by the board had to do with the orientation of the sidewalk. We had a job that was placed in the sidewalk from previous revision. We straightened the sidewalk out in front of the building, and that's on the second end of the avenue. The second item that was questioned and there was a concern over, had to do with adding some small retaining walls across the front of the property, which we've done. So we've added retaining walls on Second Avenue, on the eastern portion of the Aegean, and then we've also added some retaining wall on the east side of the Baltic. Very minor additions. Both retaining walls are similar in height, ranging about two, two feet to eighteen inches.
That's the extent of the revisions that you made to the plan.
That's correct.
Tell the question back.
Planning board, any questions? From Mr. Curley? Professionals?
Retaining walls in the city right-of-way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curley, Brian Slough, Cartaginians. And the question I had was the material of the retaining walls, how's that relate to the material of the building?
They're gonna match the exterior facade of the lower portion of the coloring.
Will the cap on the top be wide enough to sit on?
Yes.
So I think that answers what we were looking for, to have someplace where people could sit if they wanted to, as well as, you know, creating an edge along that burned-up area that goes up to the parking area. So I believe that addresses our comment regarding...
Okay, anything else?
Just so I understand, the color is gonna match the lighter color?
Yes.
Not the below?
The lower portion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Anything else? All right, public, anyone from the public would like to have any questions about the sidewalk orientation or the retaining walls?
Hi there, Shannon Brown. The very excited potential new owner of 1004 Burke. My question has to do with the retaining wall, though not on the sides of Second and Third, so I hope this is an appropriate time to ask. It looked like from the renderings, there was a retaining wall that was going to be built along the property line on the south side of 1004 Burke, between that home and the Aegean. Am I correct in saying?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to say, I'm sorry to say that, that the train left the station last time. So this would be, the questions would be having to do with these retain, these two retaining walls. Sorry to say.
Okay, note that.
Okay, but you can have a comment. Later on, we will have a comment section, and you can say whatever you like.
Wonderful.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Okay, next.
The last witness I have is Brian Leith, our landscape architect, is addressing one issue for the board.
Good evening.
Mr. Left, you understand that you are still under oath from the last hearings, and that you remain under oath this evening.
I did. During the last hearing, the main concern with the landscape plans that were submitted related to the rooftop lighting, and there was a request to drop the lighting from 12 feet to 10 feet and rerun the photometrics. That was done on the revised plans and submitted. The difference is very minimal, almost nonnoticeable.
But the revised plans reflect...
The revised plans reflect the 10-foot mountain height.
Right, we requested it to come down as far as it was, made sense.
Yeah, aside from that, the only other change to the plans were shuffle the plantings around to accommodate the new retaining walls.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any questions from the board about the light, anything?
I have a note about add the height to the planning schedule. Was that done?
That didn't change the plan at all, it was just additional information.
I just wanted to get it on the record.
Anything else from our professionals? Any questions from the public regarding the change in the height of the light? Okay.
Thank you.
And that concludes all of our testimony.
Okay, now that that concludes all of the testimony, I'd like to hear from our board to see if there's anything that, anything else that we want to discuss before we come to... We're gonna open it up to the public for comment. Is there anything else that we, we feel any of our questions have not been answered? That we're all, okay?
I'd just like our professionals to comment on the changes.
Yep. Any comments from our professionals about the changes that have been made and that we've satisfied all of your questions and concerns?
I will say that, yes, our engineering memo has been addressed, and most of it will come during resolution compliance if it were to be approved.
Right.
I had a couple of things I just wanted to, that I made note of. In our meeting notes, I just wanted to make sure it carried through.
Wait, Doug, you know what? Why don't we just put you both under oath just before we make some comments? So our professionals, you swear from the testimony you're gonna provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do, thank you.
So there was some discussion about the use of the right-of-way during construction, and the applicant seemed to agree that none of the construction wouldn't be on Burke Street in order to protect, you know, access to the adjoining home.
Yes.
So just wanted to make sure that was carried through into the resolution if it were to be approved. But everything else that was, you know, asked to be changed at the last meeting appears to have been carried through onto the plans.
Okay. Any other, anything else that, anything from CCH? Are we good to go?
So going through the review and discussing it with Mr. Sullivan before the meeting, it appears that the items that the applicant testified to this evening, it rests our concerns with the allegations that had identified in our prior review in February.
Okay, good.
One last thing.
Sure, go ahead.
There was, I believe you had requested, Barbara, that the geotech report and file design for the stormwater system on the property be...
Oh, yes. I would not forgive. But thank you, though. No problem. Anything else?
I just a couple of comments myself.
Sure, go ahead.
Just to go along with Doug's comment about Burke and the shutdown of the streets, obviously, you'll have to get approval from the city. The applicant agreed to do a geotechnical survey to ensure that the neighboring property at 1004 Burke is protected and will not suffer any damage during construction. Drive by waist not to be more than 18 feet, subdivision to be filed by MAP. Utility meters located on the eastern wall to be landscaped for screening. Trash pickup to be private, and with the rooftop amenities, access will be controlled by gates with electronic monitoring. There'll be a turnoff feature for the lighting based upon the published hours. It'll be open on weekdays from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and weekends holiday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and there shall be no speakers on the roof deck to be installed.
And we'd also mentioned about frosting the garage doors so that they wouldn't be clear glass?
Correct.
So that we couldn't see through that. And part of that geotechnical analysis, we also had mentioned that there would be an inspection offered by, and a... I'm not sure exactly what the, what I think was Carl Erver?
Erler.
Erler, I had mentioned, just to make sure that we have what he had said that we would do as part of that inspection, that he offered for the inspection to be done, and the geotechnical analysis would be done, to make sure that the home is taken care of.
Correct.
Okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more comment.
Go ahead.
I have to put in here. I believe the, there's going to be an easement for the drainage. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
So there's gonna be an easement that's gonna affect both condominiums.
That is correct.
So that'll have to be reviewed by the board engineer as well as board attorney.
Yep.
All right. Okay, now, can I get a motion to open for public comment?
So... Second.
Can I take Mr. Chameau and Mr. Galloca, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you pose? Open for public comment. Please stand up and make your way to the microphone. If you'd like to make a comment, you will each have a total of four minutes to make a comment. Please keep it relevant to the testimony and the application. Please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address, and Mr. Beacon will swear you in, and then I will start the clock.
And just for, just to clarify a little bit more, it's not only the testimony that you heard today, it's a testimony that you heard over the last, however many times we've been here, three or four times. So if you have anything to say about this application, this is your time. And then we, the board will listen to those comments, and then we will make some decisions based on that. Anyone?
Good evening, Shannon Brown. Like the color, B-R-O-W, and my current address is 1018 Roanoke Drive in Tom's River, New Jersey, but as I stated before, very soon will be 1004 Burke Street. So...
Will you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Speak into the mic.
Oh, yes.
I'm having trouble hearing it.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So...
Ms. Brown, before you start to speak, I'm just gonna swear in each witness.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Sure. So I know I'm a little bit late to the game, but I have read all of the public documents, all of the public meetings, so, you know, some of the concerns that I have, of course, I'm very excited to live in this location. It's really, you know, been a dream of ours for some time. But that being said, as I was mentioning before, the concrete barrier is something that, or the retaining wall right along the property line as I saw it in the renderings, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but my interpretation of that potential retaining wall could present some issues with stormwater runoff for the property, our driveway property. Also, again, I know this is late to the game, but Burke is a very narrow street. You have two sides, you know, parking on each side of the street. You're losing, I think it looked like six spots, six on street, or on street parking spots, four on Second, two on Burke. I've, you know, not that this matters to anybody, but I do have two teenage children. We have four cars. We have two spots in our driveway. So knowing that there's going to be an entryway to the Baltic on Burke, and we're losing those two spots on Burke, with the congestion that it's going to bring down that street is obviously a concern for me as the homeowner. And then also, the, just the, I just, my big concern is with the groundwater. Knowing that so much of the surrounding area is now going to be impervious land, and obviously, this is not my area of expertise at all, but based on some of the things that I was reading, one of the suggestions was that, you know, that underground parking should be no deeper than five to six feet below grade. When I look at the renderings, again, not an expert, but it looked to me like maybe they were eight, eight feet, eight inches below grade. So if that's the case, then I do have some concerns for potential water entering the basement of our residence. You know, I know there's already a sump pump there, so, you know, I know there are some times where there is some water in the basement at this point. I just don't wanna see that increase, you know, based on the fact that there's some additional buildings being put up nearby. I think that covers my questions and concerns. Thank you.
And your address is, once again?
1018 Roanoke Drive in Tom's River.
And you're saying that you're moving into...
We have a fully executed contract on 1004 Burke Street. They're just moving in between August eighth and August 17th.
And that's across the street from here, or that is that home?
That is that home.
That is that home, okay, okay.
Hi, I'm Jill Mondrone, soon to be the former owner of the house in the middle of this. And I just have one follow-up question. Listen, I had pages and pages of things that I actually wanted to say. It's sort of irrelevant now.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mondrone, is this comment period?
Comment period, yes.
So Mr. Beacon's gonna swear you in, and you'll raise your right hand, please.
Certainly.
You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're... You sound swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Sure. Just a follow-up question. I'm curious if there was a traffic study that was conducted because I didn't find that in any of the documentation.
You're not going to get any answers. This is a comment period only.
Okay, so, we're curious about that simply because, and you just spoke about the, the right-of-way. The right-of-way is 20 by 150 feet, right? It's the length of the buildings, 20 feet. The renderings show that that's halfway through the street. That's in fact, and the entire street is 20 feet wide. So, I just want to make sure that the street doesn't get shut down and the homeowners, there's four driveways on that street, that the homeowners can in fact get to their house at will.
I believe that that was something that was discussed, that Berg would not get closed.
Yep, just wanted to make sure.
Because we have active driveways there.
Great. Thank you all.
During construction.
During construction, yes.
Hello, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. By way of background, I would just like, oh, oh, yes, swearing in Mr. Beekman's writing.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
By way of background, I would just like to say first off that I was a party to the creation of the architectural standards in the redevelopment plan. And I think that this project is a good project going forward in terms of development, but it does not meet the goals and aspirations of the redevelopment plan architectural standards in two major areas. There are two fundamental flaws that are exhibited here. The first being that both buildings look almost identical. The plan aspired to have buildings differentiated from each other in unit block sizes, you know? Like each building lot is 50 by 150 and multiples of 50, say 100 by 150, 200 by 150. There was a desire to make even block-sized developments seem like smaller units by changing the architecture in uniform increments. Having two buildings like this covering essentially an entire block makes it look like a project, and that was not the goal of the plan. Probably something that can't be corrected at this point, we're too far into it, but for the board's future knowledge, that was one of the aspirations, to have smaller visual units displayed even though there are large developments. So, if these two buildings were differentiated architecturally, that would be a huge improvement. The other I brought up earlier, and that is the cornice, the complete or almost complete absence of a visual stopping point at the top of the building, a cornice line. That's one of the fundamental architectural elements of traditional architecture. And the plan does basically espouse using traditional architecture and architectural elements. That is, you have a base of a building, the middle of a building, and the top of the building. The top of the building, usually a soffit and fascia or a cornice in order to stop your eye from visually just going up the building right up into the sky, something of architectural interest. That would have been a huge improvement to both of these developments here, even though they're somewhat modern in execution. Having traditional elements would certainly improve that. All in all, development is needed, and this is probably a good project, but it certainly does not meet the standards or aspirations of the, of the standards in the redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment? All right, a motion to close public comment?
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
And you posed, thank you, public comment closed.
And that concludes then the, our presentation, certainly also the public presentation with regard to this application. In closing, the only thing that I would like to say is that this development is entirely consistent with the waterfront redevelopment plan. The amendments to the waterfront redevelopment plan anticipate developments of this size. This project in total probably takes up about 25% of the entire block. It creates two separate lots, two buildings on those lots, exactly what was contemplated by the waterfront redevelopment plan. In essence, this is what the waterfront redevelopment plan was looking for, to increase the residential development within that area. There's a significant amount of this plan. This accomplishes exactly what the plan had anticipated. Based upon that, based upon the revisions that were made by my client in response to the questions of the board, the comments of the board, I would ask that the board grant this application and approve the preliminary and final major site plan request that's made. Thank you.
Does the, anyone on the board have any comments that they would like to make before we proceed?
You know, I'm not sure exactly where to start here, but, you know, I think it's important to remind the public that there was a long process. And at some point, the applicant approached the redevelopment authority first, and in that process of negotiating a conceptual plan, regulations were set in place by the redevelopment authority, which in our town is the city council. And by the time these plans come to us, we are here to determine whether it complies with the regulations set by the redevelopment authority and whether it complies with the redevelopment plan. And so, while I think there are parts of this application that are extremely upsetting in a way, I think Mr. Baumgartner, in one of his previous rounds of comments, spoke in particular about architectural history, but that it extends beyond just purely the building. The alignments of our streets, the widths of our streets, the setbacks and the view corridors are also part of the way that the city plan was intended to be expressed. And there are certainly, Mr. Minervinia is certainly a capable architect, but, you know, I think there are ways that when these plans are coming to us, we have to start to think beyond whether or not height is the only parameter which we consider. In this case, I feel aligning the buildings with the existing home on Berg would have been a better outcome. It would have meant that some of the building would have had to been taller or bigger in other portions, but the outcome would have been better. This building does take up a significant portion of its own lot. Whether or not it takes up a significant portion of the, of the, of the total block is to some extent irrelevant, but the lot coverage is so high and climate change is real. We need to figure out ways to reduce impervious coverage. Both of those things could have been improved by stepping the building away from the narrow street. One of the recent speakers just spoke about the narrowness of Berg Street. And I think as these come forward, we need to, when they get to us, we don't have a lot of control over changing them. That's the unfortunate part here, is that we can look at this and say, this isn't what we, what we want to see. And to Mr. Baumgartner's point, it doesn't meet the spirit of the waterfront redevelopment plan. And I think it also, in ways, does not meet the spirit of our master plan because we need to figure out how we get people to enjoy the public environment, and that is through improving the ways that people get around that do not rely on a car. And in this particular instance, the building will be 10, 15 feet closer to the pedestrian than the previous buildings were, or any previous building before in history on that street. And so, what do we get out is a question that I keep asking myself. And we didn't get pedestrian bump outs that could potentially improve stormwater retention in the public right-of-way. We didn't get pedestrian bump outs that could make people feel safe as the traffic that people have routinely complained about are implemented. We didn't get onsite affordable housing. The applicant has absolutely fulfilled their requirement for what is required by the plan, but I'm not so sure that the people who move into this building, we should welcome all of our new residents. We need people to move here. We need people to fill our businesses and, you know, fill the schools. But how many of these people are going to be living here full-time? If you could take that 5% of units and build them onsite, that would be what, three units with people living year-round? And I think we want to start to see those things, and we don't see those things in the applications. I feel like we're hearing, seeing it again and again and again. So, while I think we're in the position of having to, not having to, of following the law here, that's our job. And what we are supposed to do is say this complies, and in large case it does, and in large case it's a well-designed building, and we've done the best we can to, I think, mitigate the impacts both to the neighboring property who will be surrounded by it and, you know, the, the future neighbors of it. But I think that as we move forward, we have to figure out a better way of getting things that do a better job of meeting, of contextualizing themselves to their environment and paying attention to what's actually written in our master plan. And I'm just not sure that this does that, unfortunately. Sorry, that was long.
Right. Anybody else have any other comments that they would like to make? No other comments? I was wondering if Mr. Beekman, if we could put something in to ensure that, I know that we had testimony that Berg would never get closed down during construction? Is there something we could put in those resolutions to make sure?
I have that in mind.
That we have that, that that's not going to get closed down?
That was represented by the applicant that Berg would not be shut down.
Okay. And also that, I think that, James, that we have a, an item regarding the, the way that we stripe to make sure that we're using the 25 feet, 25 foot from the curb, from the corner versus the 50 foot, the exemption on parking?
They, they won't be doing any striping on the road. That falls to our responsibility, the city's responsibility. So, what they had shown us was only for our information, not really what they were planning on doing.
Okay. And this is when, when they're going to do this after, we don't know when, some future...
No, they aren't doing it at all.
Okay, they're not doing it at all?
No.
So, at some point, probably the city will stripe it...
Yes.
Sometime, but it's not part of this project?
And it'll be the city's responsibility to stripe it how they want it. It's, it doesn't follow that plan.
Okay. But the rest, the rest of the city really does follow the 25 foot versus the 50 foot?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't know if we have anything else that we want to put into the, the resolution? Any conditions besides the ones that we've already had the discussion about?
Color.
Sorry?
Color.
The color, yes. We want to put the Booth Bay blue into there and everything that was discussed today?
Is that just on the one building?
Sorry?
That's, the blue is just on the one building?
Correct.
I think otherwise, the other items that we had, we had discussed are all in, Mr. Beekman had mentioned them before. So, can I get a, a motion to approve this application based on all of the conditions that have been mentioned on this application?
Need to approve.
I second.
I have a motion by Alvin Clayton and a second by Barbara Crissa. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alvin Clayton?
Yes.
James Bonanno?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes, I just want to make a comment, though. I, I agree with what Mr. Baumgartner had said about the, the top of the building and the architectural issues, but in spite of that, I'm voting yes. I think this is a good project. I think part of our problem is that when these applications go before the technical review committee, this is where, where we kind of fall down. We have a lot of Eric's comments, Gardner's comments, and if they can only be incorporated at that point, we'd be in better shape, I think. But yes, I am voting yes.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Eric Galloco?
Yes.
Daniel Chana Mayo?
I don't think I could vote. I don't think I could vote. I don't listen here for the initial.
You weren't here for...
For the initial hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry. And finally, Barbara Crissa?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That is a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much for your time to serve in this application. I do want to comment, the board, there's a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of comments, and I'm sure you appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take five minutes? Want to take five minutes? While we're moving around? Or maybe not? Hey, Irina? Should we take five minutes?
Can I take five minutes?
Let's take five minutes while, while everybody is getting everything.
Recession.
A motion for recess, five-minute recess?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, five-minute recess beginning immediately.
All set?
All set.
All set.
All right, let's get back to you, everyone. 8:01 p.m. Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Alvin Clayton?
Here.
James Bonanno?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Eric Galloco?
Here.
Daniel Chana Mayo?
Here.
Great, sorry, and finally Barbara Crissa?
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
And ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Kevin Kennedy. This is a continuation of a hearing. You'll recall, we've been here on two occasions thus far. I believe it was June 6th and also April 18th. And we are here tonight and in the very brief analysis, we are looking for approval to demolish the existing structures on the site and construct a four-story mixed-use building, which will contain 92 dwelling units, about 4,000 square feet of retail space and about 7,700 square feet of office space. Madam Chair, TJ Ricci is seated to my right. He's our planner. We have not had him testify yet. With your consent and the board's consent, I'd like to have him sworn in. And then after that, we have Jake Modesto, who is our engineer. He previously testified. I have some short recall moments for him, for him to do some touch-up on some engineering matters. And Anthony Van Damarc, our architect, is here. One, he's here if necessary. Two, he's here to answer any questions. And three, when TJ leaves, he will be our computer consultant. So, he's, he's an important part of our team. So, that having been said, I would like to have the witness sworn.
Yes, because we have to also, have you presented before this board before?
No.
Like where your qualifications are? Can we go through that, please?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll sworn first. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And your name for the record, and if you can spell it as well, please?
TJ Ricci. Last name is spelled R-I-C-C-I.
Okay. And Mr. Ricci, just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed professional planner?
That is correct.
Why don't you tell, pursuant to the chair's request, tell the board a little bit about the licenses and certifications you hold and the experiences, and if you've not testified this board, if you've testified before other boards?
Absolutely. So, yeah, my name is TJ Ricci. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been a planning consultant for approximately five years. I have a bachelor's degree as well as a master's degree in seated regional planning from Rutgers University. I have testified before over 30 boards throughout the state of New Jersey in everything from single-family to industrial, commercial, and to mixed-use projects like the one we have here tonight.
And TJ, for the record, are your licenses and certifications current and up to date?
Yes, they are.
Madam Chair, with your consent, I'd like to have him recognized. Thank you. All right. And so TJ, just to begin with, you're familiar with this site, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the application?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the testimony and evidence which has been presented to this board thus far?
Yes.
Okay, so importantly, I am just going to turn it over to you. Could you give the board some testimony regarding the planning impact and effects of this and consistency with the redevelopment plan?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Madam Chair, can we see this on the screen?
Yeah, I was going to pull this up just for the benefit of the board.
How can we get this up there? I wasn't hearing. Could you, uh, give the board some testimony regarding the planning, uh, impact and effects of this and consistency with the, uh, the redevelopment plan? Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Madam Chair, can we see this on the screen?
Yeah, I was gonna pull this up just for the benefit of the board. How can we get? This up there, I wasn't here last time when we set this? It's not plugged in, or is it plugged in the back?
You could wake it up, wake up the computer, but let's, let's just save the video.
Alright, so I believe that this aerial exhibit was already previously marked. Um, this was an aerial exhibit prepared by my office, Stonefield Engineering Design, dated 4/13/2022. Madam Chair, I believe that was A1. That's correct. Um, so here we see the property in red, project site, um, block 705, blocks 1, 2, 3, 4. So the property actually consists of these four, um, you know, oddly shaped, um, pieces of, uh, of land that actually, you know, when taken together, encompass, you know, roughly half of the block that we see here. Um, it's a corner lot, it's, you know, frontage on Memorial Drive and Springwood Avenue. Um, and then to the rear is the NJ Transit Railroad, so it's actually fronting on just two streets, but then bounded by the railroad tracks to your right, um, or east. Um, so on the site right now is, um, a former industrial, commercial uses. There's a couple buildings, a couple parking areas, um, associated with those former uses. It's been vacant for, um, quite a while. Most of the site is, is overgrown, um, in very poor condition. All the buildings on the site are, are, you know, well in a state of disrepair. Um, and it's, you know, pretty unsightly as it stands right now. It's a, it's a piece of land that's pretty desperate for redevelopment. Um, site is a little bit over an acre, approximately 1.14 acres, nice-sized piece of land. Um, when we look at the surrounding uses, it's, you know, predominantly, um, multifamily residential. If we look to our left, um, well, plan left or our west, this was a recent multifamily residential development that was constructed, I believe, uh, approximately three or four years ago. Um, to our north, up here, we have a commercial plaza. And this actually, this parking lot connects to the Asbury Train Station, um, you know, walking distance from the site. And then also to our north, we have another multifamily residential, um, property. This one has been around since, I believe, the 50s or 60s, a little bit older. Um, and then to our south, we actually see the Asbury Park Neptune Municipal Border. Um, so as you guys have heard, um, the proposal tonight is for a four-story, 92-unit mixed-use building. Now, the different uses in this mixed-use are gonna consist of residential, retail, as well as office space. Um, so this is a permitted use in the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. That is the zone that we are located in, specifically the gateway zone, specifically because you're driving, um, in, and it serves as a gateway area into the city of Asbury. Um, so in addition to the mixed-use structure and, and the uses that are going in the building, uh, there's a lot of other exciting features about this proposal that you have heard from, uh, Mr. Modesto and Mr. Van der Mark. Um, those things include indoor amenity spaces, outdoor amenity spaces, that, that nice rooftop. Um, you have street trees, you have, um, all of these street scape and sidewalk improvements to really kind of activate, um, the street and, and totally, um, help to revitalize this area. Um, so we are seeking, um, some relief, um, but I think it's important to note that we are compliant with use. We're compliant with height, density, um, parking. Those are generally what we think of as the more strict, um, regulations that guide land development. A lot of the relief that we do seek from the plan, um, and from the zoning ordinance, is more, um, design-related, specific to the architectural features of the building and specific to the odd shape of this lot. Um, so with that being said, for the benefit of the board, I'll just walk us through the variances. Um, so we are seeking a maximum front yard setback. Um, now normally it's a minimum front yard setback. You have to be setback a certain amount, but in this case, um, there's a maximum requirement of 15 feet, because the intent is to bring the building close to the street. Um, so we are actually, we do extend beyond the 15 feet that would be allowed at 16.2, um, and the reason is really, um, due to the odd shape of the lot. It's just in this one part because, you know, the shape of this lot kind of juts out a little bit, and then it comes back in. Um, this is more of a technicality than anything. If there is a, a right-of-way dedication, um, this will essentially be eliminated. Um, but the intent really of that maximum 15-foot front setback is to bring that building close to the street scape, which as you can see here, um, we believe the intent is met, because we have this, um, fronting on this wide sidewalk, um, you know, close to the street line. Um, and then the second variance is a rear, a rear yard setback variance. Um, 20 feet is required, and on the plans, you can see we have 18.4 feet, um, to the edge of the property. It's just in this, um, one location right here. Um, you can see, you know, roughly the, the 20-foot line kind of traverses, you know, just outside of these parking spaces, and that just this corner of the building kind of clips that, and that's the part that encroaches into the rear yard. Um, it's actually 8.4 feet to the Neptune border as well. Um, but once again, the intent of this is met. We have substantial amount of landscape buffering between the uses, and really the result of that, um, is, is, you know, the column spacing, the architectural features of the building and the layout of the site that caused that to kind of encroach into the rear yard, but very minimally, just for a very small portion, just in this corner right here. Um, so that sums up the variances, but we are seeking design exceptions from the redevelopment plan. Um, the maximum compact stall dimensions, um, so nine, nine feet by 18 feet is required. Um, the, the plan has a provision, if you provide a certain amount of co, of regular-sized spaces, you can, um, construct compact spaces. Um, we don't meet, we're not eligible for the compact spaces because we don't have the full-size spaces, but interestingly enough, Asbury ordinance does actually allow for spaces, and they allow for seven-and-a-half-foot-wide compact spaces, so that's actually significantly, um, lower than what we're actually proposing here. The result, um, you know, the, the reason really is, is dealing with the site constraints, is trying to balance providing, um, all of the parking on the site and having the room to be able to do it, trying to work with the column spacing, um, trying to provide, you know, a lot of these retail, a lot of these amenity spaces along the street line. Um, at the end of the day, you really don't have, um, a whole lot of room to play, which is why we, we felt necessary to kind of, um, um, reduce down those spaces. But the eight-and-a-half-foot-wide compact space is generally a widely-accepted industry standard width. Um, and then also, same thing with the drive aisles, 24 feet is required, um, and I think at its smallest point is 21.1 feet. Um, if you look at the design of the site, most of the drive aisles actually do comply with the 24-foot requirement. It's just in spaces where, um, there are, um, columns that kind of interrupt, um, you know, some of the drive aisles, um, that, that's the kind of the pinch point where, why we need to seek that relief. But the majority of the drive aisles actually do comply with the 24 feet. Mr. Modesto actually testified to this, um, and said that there were no, you know, there's no impacts to, um, the turning movements within the, within the garage. Um, and the loading space and the loading space clearance, so we're required to have two spaces. Um, we comply with the length of the loading space, but it's the width that we are not compliant with. If we're, we, we do have the one, but they're supposed to be 10 feet wide, and we have 19 feet. So we're essentially one foot short of actually complying with that requirement, and the reason being? You said 10 feet wide or 20? I believe it's 10. But you have 19? We, yeah, so this is just one sp, because it's one space. If we had one more foot, then we could put the two spaces. Oh. Yeah, so we do have a sufficient amount of, um, loading area. Um, it's just, once again, it's kind of, uh, more of a technicality, um, with regards to laying out the site, trying to balance and get everything onto the site, um, and, and also, you know, provide the parking, provide adequate drive aisles, um, deal with the column spacing, et cetera.
So you do, so you do comply with one loading?
Yes, but we do, we need a second one. We need two. So if we had one more foot, we would be compliant with the number. We're compliant with the dimension of the one that we have, and it's, it's almost big enough to have the two, but we're just a bit short.
So you're asking for a variance for that?
Correct. It's a design exception from the law. Um, and then the loading space clearance, 14 feet is required, vertical clearance, and 13.83 feet is proposed. Um, Mr. Van der Mark testified to this, um, before. Um, it's really due to the site constraints and the, the elevation changes from Springwood down to Memorial Drive. Um, but it really is a, a de minimis exception, and, you know, it's not anticipated to have any, um, any vehicles that would be um, larger than 14 feet, or, you know, that would go in there and, um, and cause any problems. Um, the minimum refuse storage area for residential and non-residential. Um, we are deficient in the amount of square footage for the refuse area that we're providing. Um, we are providing 377 square feet. Um, as Mr. Modesto testified last time, this is gonna be a private hauler. Um, trash and recycling pickup each is gonna be, um, two, if not three, times a week. So it's really gonna be, um, based on the traffic generate, I mean, the trash generation and the demand. Um, they're gonna adjust and take that out as needed. So although we don't have, um, space, um, they're gonna ensure that, you know, no trash builds up, um, within that refuse and storage area.
So how much space do you have?
377 square feet.
You said that's what's required?
That's what's proposed. I believe it was approximately 1,100 square feet is required. So it's roughly there. Um, with regards to the architectural features, um, and the architectural relief, um, we are seeking relief for, um, non-residential facade should have a minimum of 60% of the ground floor as windows. Um, and we're at 29% for Memorial Drive and 26% for Springwood Avenue. Um, Mr. Van der Mark testified that he will, um, you know, work with board professionals to add more windows and more glazing on that ground floor. Um, it kind of stems from a result of, of not everywhere, um, not every, um, wall on this facade really requires a window, because we have, you know, we have the trash room, we have mechanical rooms, we have, you know, a bicycle room. So, so it kind of stems from the fact that, you know, you don't want to put windows along the entire thing, um, if it's not really necessary. But I believe, um, he testified to you last time, we are gonna, uh, bump up that glazing and try to make it more, um, you know, more transparent. Um, and then the vertical alignment of windows, um, so, and the architectural distinction betwe, between residential and non-residential floors. Um, so obviously the, there is no, um, clear vertical alignment with, um, you know, the different floors. Uh, Mr. Van der Mark testified that really this is the intent of the building. Um, the building was specifically designed this way to be more architecturally interesting. Um, with regards to the garage doors being visible from the street, um, they're technically not supposed to be visible from the street. Um, but really, when we have this corner lot here, um, we're fronting only on these two roadways. Uh, Mr. Sekler, um, the traffic expert at last hearing, testified to the fact that you generally want to locate these driveways um, farthest you can from this signalized intersection. So really, you're fronting two streets, um, you have the two entrances to promote this internal circulation. This is kind of, um, the best location for these driveways. Um, but really, to mitigate the concern of them being visible from the street, uh, Mr. Van der Mark, um, agreed that, you know, that we can provide some frosted or opaque, um, you know, glazing on them, make them, you know, not as transparent, not as visible, um, and apparent from the street. Um, with regards to the street numbers, uh, street numbers are required at each door of the building. Um, we don't propose them at every single door on the front, um, facade, um, only located at the residential main entrances. Um, we opted instead for the commercial and the retail tenants to just do signage. Um, I think people identify the stores and the, you know, whatever's gonna be at the coffee shop by the name of the shop rather than by the number. So they are, but they are located at the residential entrances.
But isn't the office, there's a second-floor office, is there not, commercial space?
There is, correct.
And, and that's on entrances on Memorial?
I believe so.
Correct.
Yes.
So is it gonna have a Memorial Drive address?
I would defer to the architect on that, who prepared the plans with the signage, because I'm not entirely sure. We'll come back to that in a moment, that's okay. And then lastly, um, we're seeking a variance for the maximum permitted, um, lighting illumination. So the maximum average is one foot candle. Um, we are over that in the parking garage. Um, the reality of it is, is that, you know, it's typical to have, you know, an internal parking garage exceed the average of one-foot candles. Um, this is really due to safety, you don't want to be in a dark, um, garage. The good thing is, um, while we do exceed that lighting requirement, this is, this is an internal, this is an enclosed garage. It's not like, um, you know, there's a, you know, excessive amount of exterior lighting that's spilling over property lines. It is gonna be, for the most part, um, entirely contained within, um, you know, within the garage. And like I said, this is a safety thing, when you're in a, you know, in a, a dark, um, parking garage, you don't feel, um, very safe. It's very difficult to, to maneuver, navigate, things of that nature. So that's why it's very typical to see, you know, them being over one foot candle.
But it's actually open, right? Because if I remember the last time, there's, it's, it's open, but then there's a retaining wall.
Correct.
And I think we had some comments about the height of the retaining wall, so we don't see into the garage or something.
Right, I believe there's a.
Light gonna spill out from there?
I would defer, um, to Mr. Van der Mark, because his office, or they prepared the lighting plan, but I don't believe that there would be light spill over. And there is, um, you know, substantial amount of, of, you know, vegetative buffering around the site as well.
It would only be to actually, to the Neptune border and to the railroad right away.
That's right. Right, yes.
What was the number of the proposed foot candles?
I don't, I'm not entirely sure, because I don't believe that it was in a letter. I believe that the first plan, um, there wasn't enough information to determine, um, how lit the area was gonna be, so Mr. Van der Mark actually revised the lighting plan to show the actual foot candles. Um, but by looking at it, um, we determined that it, it is gonna exceed the one-foot candle average, but I'm not, I, I, I don't have those calculations off the top of my head. But I think we did.
Yeah, I think the board's gonna want that, right?
Right, um, so that sums up the relief. Um, so I really just want to talk about how the project's in line, um, with the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan. Um, when you look at the goals, um, some of the goals are improve the availability of housing alternatives for residents of all income levels. I think that this is a great opportunity to do that, because we have the market-rate units, and then we have the affordable housing units. And then within those affordable housing units, they're, they're even tiered for varying incomes and varying different types of people, varying, um, uh, you know, varying bedrooms. So when you have market-rate units, affordable units, and then you have a mixture of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, um, people that drive, people that bike, people that walk, we're, we're crossing all of these to, to make this property available to all different types of people, which is a huge advantage. It's not all one-bedrooms, everyone gets one spot and that's it. So you're not, you're not stuck, this is available to many different types of people. Provide areas for active and passive recreational uses, as well as an area where residents can come together, meet each other, and foster new relationships. So you kind of have a mix of this. You have that rooftop, which is gonna be private for the residents, um, to hang out, get some, you know, get some air, socialize with other residents of the building. And then, you know, this area on the site, we kind of have this, um, you know, this cut-in. This is kind of more of a, a quasi-public space, where you don't necessarily have to be, um, a resident. There are benches here, this could be a space, you know, people gathering, people, you know, leave their office, waiting for an Uber, waiting for a friend to come pick them up, so you do have these areas. You have these, um, these active street fronts and these active street furniture, um, where people really can come together and, you know, socialize, form a sense of community. Um, promote walking and bicycling as an alternative, um, means of transit. So we have the, you know, we have the car spaces, but we also, we're in, well within walking distance of the Asbury Train Station, which is great if people, um, commute by train, um, providing these nice wide sidewalks that, you know, people can choose to walk around, um, and walk to their destination if they choose to. And then, um, lastly, we, you know, we have, I believe it's three rooms of bike storage, which is, um, great. So maybe, um, people that wouldn't have thought of getting a bike can, you know, would maybe even move here and say, I, I maybe don't need a, a car. They have these great bike storage rooms, we're gonna, we're gonna get bikes, and we're gonna bike around Asbury. Um, so all of these things help really push that, the walkability and the bikeability, that to redevelopment plan. the redevelopment plan calls for. And then lastly, one last goal is connect Springwood Ave to other parts of the city. And I think this is great. I think that this is actually, you know, it's, it's, it's on the other side of the tracks. You see a lot of development interest in Cookman, on Lake, on Bangs Ave. This is one of those developments that it's just, it's in walking distance to them, but we're bringing something new to this neighborhood. And this is one of those things that can help connect the walkability, the bikeability between the area of Cookman and Bangs and Lake over to this area to help keep these businesses thrive and keep businesses over there thriving as well. So I think this will play nicely into the rest of the, you know, developed downtown area. So the redevelopment plan allows relief under the C2 provision of the MLUL. And what that means is that if you take the project positives and you weigh them against the negatives, the positives should substantially outweigh the negatives. And if, you know, all of those positives promote the purposes of the plan, things like active street front, bikeability, walkability, then you can improve essentially that relief. And in my professional opinion, as a planner, I think, you know, when you, you know, when you balance this on a balancing scale, I think that, you know, all those benefits do carry forth and warrant an approval for this. Like I said, all those benefits, we have things that create an active street front, the mixing of uses, promoting walkability, bikeability, the social aspects with this development. You really, you have all these different activities and all these different elements happening, and it really helps the street come alive. And I think that's something that this neighborhood desperately needs. And I think when you have, you know, activity on what's now a vacant lot, it serves as a catalyst for other private investment in the area and other people to come in and say, hey, this neighborhood is, you know, becoming really vibrant and really active and, you know, it, you know, improves the area as a whole. So I think that, you know, the positives are substantial with this, and I think it's really going to improve this vacant piece of land, and it's very aligned with the plan. And that concludes my direct, but I'm happy for any questions.
I have some questions and, Madam Chair, you know, I, it's not my belligerent, you know, my purview, but I had, I think it's a nice project and especially that we get an affordable housing component. But I think I asked a question about parking early on and about how that goes with the affordability. I don't know if you can answer this question. And also, if I understand correctly, this is an electric heat project, correct? Is that right?
Correct.
And I assume then tenants will be separately needed for their electric heat? How does that play in with the, because I assume the affordability, you know, there's a legal framework for what the rents would be. Does it take into consideration as well the utilities? You know, if this was a, you know, a gas boiler where the landlord supplied heat, is that into the equation, what they're going to pay for heat?
I don't believe so. I believe it's based on average median income in the area.
Right, but for instance, again, I say if this were a conventional natural gas heated where the landlord paid, you know, there was a central boiler, tenants would not be paying for heat. So your rent is X, but now it's X plus your heat. Could anybody answer that question?
Sir, I don't, it's a fair question, and I don't know the answer at this time, although I will know that if the application gets approved, obviously it's going to have to comply with all the city's prevailing affordable housing regulations. I just don't know the intricacies of how the electric heat works with regard to the qualifications. I just don't know at this time.
And also about the parking, because that couldn't be the answer either, whether they, you know, tenants get a free space or they charge for parking?
Yes, and we'll have someone address that. We do, that was a question I was asked last time, we do have information on that.
So there's a limitation on the gross amount of income that a tenant must pay that includes the total.
Okay. So what happens then if, you know, the electric heat is up and it goes above that percentage you pay for?
The landlord?
Okay.
It would have to be adjusted. So it behooves them to have efficient appliances and an efficient system. I would say from a, and from a climate change standpoint, we're all going to have to start using more electricity as opposed to natural gas and fuel oil.
I mean, they're proposing that in New York City as well.
Yes.
You're not talking about our grid, can that support?
There's that issue as well.
Does anybody else have, anybody else from the planning board have any questions that they would like to pause based on the testimony?
Yeah, maybe it's not this witness, maybe it's been asked, answered before. So it's 21 studios, 26 one bedrooms, 41 two bedrooms, four three bedrooms. So it's 92 units, 18 affordable. What's the breakdown of the affordables? How many one, two, and three bedrooms?
We have that, and we need one minute to answer that.
Okay, that'll be answered later, okay. And to take you back on Dan a little bit, and we're going to talk about parking later, it's just amazing, it's just not enough parking at this point in time, so we'll talk about that later also.
Mayor, unless there's any change, the prior testimony was that there are two, there are 19 affordable units. Two studio affordable, one one bedroom affordable, 12 two bedroom affordable, and four three bedroom affordable.
So all four three bedrooms are affordable?
And accord, right, and according to the testimony, it does meet the UHAC requirements.
I'm not positive, and this is my bad, and I don't know, Clark Keating Henshaw knows. When we look past the affordable, I thought it was just one, two, and three bedrooms. I'm not sure if studios qualify for affordable.
No, you can use studios, they would count the same as one-
You can, but did, is that what the council passed?
No.
I'm sorry, which council?
This council, Asbury Park City Council.
Well, that I, that I can't-
To give, and I, I don't know, I apologize for not knowing, but this is a question. I don't remember saying studios could be affordable. Could, could be, I'm just throwing that out there.
The general regulations, a studio and one bedroom count the same.
Okay.
Just in general, I would say in general though, I haven't seen anybody propose studios in a long time. So this is the first time I've seen studios proposed to affordables in probably a decade and a half. But if it's allowed in your ordinance-
That's pretty relevant here.
Well, it's relevant, and at the same time, what I was going to say is that not only would the applicant have to comply with UHAC, but the applicant would have to comply with any stricter ordinance that Asbury Park may require, and that can be a condition of any resolution of approval.
And we would obviously comply with that because-
Right, and I could be wrong, I just don't remember.
And is the percentage of affordable based upon unit or square footage?
It's based on bedrooms.
Bedroom?
Yeah. And the size of it is based on the uniform construction.
I know that, I was, I was kind of a, I'd like to just talk about the refuse, the shortage, because it seems significant.
It does.
It seems like really significant. Can you go over those numbers again?
And if you want, I know he testified as to the nature of the relief that we think we will need. I can have Mr. Ricci test that, or I am going to be bringing Jake-
That's fine, I'm, I'm fine with whoever can answer the question. It's okay if it's not.
I just want to make sure that on the record, I get the numbers exact.
Okay. Yeah, because you had mentioned it.
377 to 1,100.
So three, you have 377.
Correct.
And you're required to have 1,100.
Correct.
That's really significant. That's really significant. Okay.
That's also a problem down the road to the city, which is down the road after this because I just found out you guys are applying for a pilot when this is done, which has nothing to do with this hearing, but no big deal. But with the Kelly bill, the city has to pick up the garbage. So we have to pick it up six times a week instead of twice a week, like because of your, the size of your facility. But I mean, like, we dealt with other developers during the pilot program and said, they said, we'll opt out of the Kelly bill for five years and we'll pay for the garbage.
Okay.
And when you're looking at having one quarter of what's needed, that could be something down the road that just put in the back of your head.
Sure. And I will have Mr., our engineer, talk about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, is that something we can have part of the resolution to have them opt out of, that bill?
Pilot has nothing to do with the planning board.
Right.
The bill will say, I don't know what Kelly bill is, that something that the city-
Well, the Kelly bill is a state law saying cities have to pay to pick up garbage from condominiums, apartments, and everything else, where years ago they didn't have to, but now they, now they have to. So when somebody's proposing a pilot to the city, which has nothing to do with the planning board, this would be a city thing, well, wait a second, like, you know.
We can't put the burden on the city for something like this.
Right.
Because of that shortage.
Right. But that, again, that's not, that's the planning board.
Sure.
Right, but we still should have that discussion and it'll come up. Okay. Anything else that?
I, I just had a question. I want, what was your thinking of putting commercial space on the second floor?
So I wasn't the, I didn't design the plans, I just testified in the capacity of a planner and the, you know, the compliance with the redevelopment plan. But from a planning standpoint, I do know that, you know, some second floor office space, especially, you know, fronting out onto the street, an active street front, is something that is, you know, looked at as, you know, you attract companies, you attract people to want to move into that space because it's, you know, it's, it's located in an active downtown, it's on the second floor, you know, it's a little bit higher up, maybe a little bit better view of some of the surrounding neighborhoods and areas of the city. So it is something that is sought after, and I believe that the redevelopment plan does permit it. But as to the thinking of why exactly that was proposed, I think that maybe is more a question for the architect who did prepare the floor plans.
Okay.
We'll have him up here.
I, I have a question, I'm not sure it's for you. As part of the package that we received was a copy of a current survey, and I've got some questions concerning the survey as it affects this entire lot.
And is, would this be the right moment?
Would he be the person to talk to?
Probably not.
Okay.
But we'll bring that to the engineer and then, and then whoever else we need to bring up, we'll get it.
Okay.
Did you mention how many spaces we're going to have these seven and a half, but where?
Uh, none, there are actually eight and a half. But the Asbury ordinance does allow for compact space to drop down to seven and a half.
You don't have that size?
No. I believe that there's a couple of eights up here in the corner. I think there's two. And then I believe that the rest are eight and a half. Yeah, eight and a half by 19.
So all the spaces will be technically compact spaces?
Correct. We have two listed as compact because they are eight.
So what does that mean, you can only put a compact car in there?
I think this is more of a question for the civil engineer who prepared the plan, but I have seen regulation-wise and zoning-wise, sometimes eight and a halves are compact, sometimes they are the full-size space, and compact are seven and a half or eight. So I've seen it both ways.
What was, what are we supposed to pay for non-compact?
Nine. So we're, we're essentially, we're six inches, six inches short, so three inches on each side.
Make a difference getting out of your car. Are all those parking spaces six inches short, given the ones that are supposed to be shared?
Uh, correct. Yeah, so nine, nine feet is a requirement, and then they are all eight and a half feet.
Is this the project with the stacker?
Yes.
Fancy.
Yes.
Guess they're not marketing to the crew cab, full bed driver.
Any, any other questions from the, from the board? Any questions from our professionals to the witness? If not, any questions from the public for this witness?
Yes, thank you. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. There was testimony earlier about setbacks. I'd like some clarity on what you were talking about, maximums versus minimums and where they are located. Could you explain that a little better?
Yeah, so, you know, in a lot of zoning ordinances, you have a minimum setback, meaning that they want to set the building back a certain amount of feet off the curb. In this instance, in the plan-
I think, I think you mean off the property line.
Off, yeah, off the property line.
Right.
You actually have a maximum setback, so it's between zero feet to 15 feet, but they allow for zero feet or zero.
In this, in this development, zero to 15?
Exactly.
Okay, and what, and what have you established here as your setbacks?
So-
Because it seems like the property line is discontinuous here somehow.
Exactly, and I think that's, that's kind of why we're seeking the relief. You know, if this property line-
The dotted line there on the map?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's, it's weird.
If that did follow the front, you know, the front of the building line, which would theoretically be here, we would be, we would have that zero setback that the plan, you know.
Okay, so the anomaly with this site is that the street right of way has a discontinuity in it where the property line is not a straight line.
Exactly.
On Memorial, at least.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then it's this-
So, so let's talk about from the curb then, as a, as a straight line. Obviously, the curb is a straight line.
Right.
So how far back from the curb are you?
Uh, looks like we're about 15 feet.
15 feet on Memorial?
Correct.
Okay, and then on Springwood?
Seven and a half feet.
Seven and a half?
Hold on, that's the property line. I would say more like five and a half feet.
Five and a half?
Six.
Okay, so you're showing trees there. Tree pits are generally three to four feet, are they not?
Uh, yes, they are.
Okay, so what does that leave for a pedestrian walking space? Not much, right?
Two to three feet.
Two or three feet. Minimum sidewalk widths are usually four to five feet for walkways for pedestrians. So how do you reconcile cramming the building so close to the curb on the Springwood Avenue side and not having room for trees or pedestrians to coexist?
I mean, once again, I think this kind of goes back to, you kind of have this odd-shaped piece of property and, you know, we have to be able to fit the parking on the ground. We have to fit, you know, all the retail tenants and the mixed use and everything. So, you know, at the end of the day, you don't have a lot of room left over really to, to provide, you know, the widest sidewalk possible. I think that the applicant has made, you know, their best effort, and you have a nice 15-foot sidewalk in the front, you know, put wide sidewalks, you know, where we could. But I think it's a result of really having to fit, you know, all these different things on the site.
And Madam Chair, I, and Mr. Baumgartner are also, our engineer can address that as well.
Yeah, we're going to have to because if we're, we're having the discussion of saying that we're trying to integrate, you know, walkability into town, that's where you'd be walking into town.
Right.
And you don't have room to walk into town. And you don't really want to cross the street because that would defeat the purpose. Okay?
Okay, I, I think I pointed out what my, what my point was. Thank you.
First floor is not inset there, is it?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
It's somewhat difficult to tell the plan since parts of the plan are cantilevered and some are not.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going to say our engineer will address that.
Any, any other questions from the public? Okay.
All right, thank you, TJ. May I recall Jake Modesto, our engineer?
Yeah, with the understanding that we do want to circle back to a lot of these questions that have been brought up. Okay.
Mr. Modesto, you do understand that you are still under oath from the prior hearings and you continue to be under oath this evening?
Yes, sir, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, did you want to go through your questions first that you wanted, or your questions first or your testimony?
I just, yeah, I guess we can go through some of the testimony, I think a lot of things I wanted to bring up with some of the open items like- things are wanting to bring up with some of the open items, like over in the inside review letter dated six-two, two thousand and twenty-two. In particular, starting with the survey component, there should have been a survey submitted dated six-nine, two thousand and twenty-two by Charles Trumott. This addresses really the comments one through five as it relates to providing a survey with topography, location of the survey, uh, sorry, location of the sanitary line, and then easements on the property that was given to us, the title that we received. Our survey confirmed as well that there are no plottable easements on the property, so none have been shown in the survey. I think it's a little discrepancy of what the, the engineer has asked us to look at, and some of the right-of-way improvements as well, sorry, the right-of-way widths have been shown within that. I do want to clarify, we will be providing a geotechnical test that will allow us to understand the infiltration rates and groundwater depths as required from an NJDEP standpoint. Continued clarity regarding the, I think that was the, um, the ability for us to recharge into the ground with, relating to the monitoring wells. So essentially, all those monitoring wells are located, we'll call it more across the Memorial Drive frontage, that's the areas that we were looking at, and essentially what's going to happen is the building will act as the cap to those contaminated soils. It's going to be, we're actually at the supply of the state, get the necessary approvals for any remediation, it'll be an action plan for the soils. However, the infiltration system is away and will basically not impact any, any person that would come in contact with the soil. So essentially, the building ends up at being the cap from an environmental standpoint. So that, that's basically, we can infiltrate, it's not an issue. It allows us to add groundwater recharge in the situation. We're in a PA1, it's not required, but we're adding that anyways because we have an infiltration system.
I'm sorry, did you say there were no easements?
There were no easements found through the title search that was done and the ultimate search, the title comment that was provided to the applicant.
So we're here in this concrete culvert that's at the southern part, didn't we notice talk about, there was a sewer?
So there, yeah, there's a seventy-two inch sewer main that runs essentially what we'll call is the municipal line. Um, I think the majority of it was intended to be actually within the Neptune portion of the property. However, it has a small, small traversion into the city. The building is respecting that by a minimum of five feet all around the perimeter of that. We're going to ensure that there's going to be no impact to that.
So that's an easement?
There is no recorded easement or plottable easement that was found through the title comment given to the survey.
So it just exists physically?
It exists physically.
It's just not recorded?
There's no recorded easement, and there's some law that recognizes implied easements or easements by prescription, but yes, we look for that, but, and that's why importantly, as Jake's saying, we've been designed to not interfere with that.
Yeah, there was a lot of conversations back and forth, and one protecting, ensuring that we weren't going to interfere with that. We did all necessary ground penetrating radar, we scoped it, we did whatever we could to make sure, ensure our billing's not going to impact that.
So eventually we'll be in the resolution, it's not recorded. I mean, if it's not recorded, they don't have to legally, well, maybe, unless you see...
Well, they know it's there. They're recognizing the fact that it's there, they have to, they have to call it. Who owns it?
That is, I think it's a joint sewer line between the city and the town.
Active.
So after, and if they both utilize it?
It is active, yep, and it leads out, you know, away from the property.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they'll have to comply with that, but yes, we'll put something in the resolution if it's proposed.
And that's not a problem.
Do you give brownfield credits on New Jersey for cleaning up the site?
Uh, I don't have that knowledge on that one. Um, and then as it relates to, I think there's a couple additional items that were left open, the sewer, the city sewer connection, we'll agree to comply with that, we'll make sure that we obtain that. There's a TWA application, we do meet the threshold to require that, a little clarification there. We will obtain that through the state, and we'll be on that process as well. The curb is a curb ramp detail for any improvements that we're making at the intersection of Memorial and Spring, Springwood Ave. So we will be also providing that detail. And then, as it relates to the additional requirements, asking us to provide information on the plans, including the setback modification being measured from the municipal line versus the property line, we'll agree to comply with that, and our planner's already testified on that request, which is eight point four, eighteen is from the property line, eighteen point four from the property.
Yeah, so, so you don't have to do that. The, the MLUL goes to the property line, not the, not the municipal boundary line.
Okay.
So, yeah, you don't, you don't have to do it.
We'll add the dimension. And then I, I think that was all the open items when it relates to, and then we'll revise our plans accordingly to any overhangs we properly show on the plans in reference to the architectural plans, which already should correlate. I think there were a couple of questions regarding the trash. There's the one hot item coming off the top of my head. Three hundred and seventy-seven feet are shown on the property. The hundred and, sorry, one thousand and fourteen square feet of area is required when we do the calculations. This is noted to be a private hauler, so we will have complete control, the ability to take trash off, we're not asking for public help, we're taking this from a private standpoint. Keep in mind, about a thousand square feet is basically the equivalency of another retail component. Currently on site, we just have under fourteen, thirteen hundred square feet for one of our retail spaces, so it would be the equivalent of basically having a separate retail space that the applicant is basically finding a betterment, because they have the ability to control the trash removal with a private hauler. So that's part of the reason and justifications that we're looking for when we have this, this request in front of you. So the intent, it's, it's been accounted for, but we want to activate the space across the front, that's kind of asked of us in the redevelopment plan as well.
Yeah, we're going to need to put something in to, if this does have to go to, to, it cannot go to city. We cannot burden the city with this.
Yeah, and I, and I think we need to find out whether the city has to be burdened according to what the mayor just indicated.
Right, because if that's true, then we can't, this is not, this is not a plan that, that'll work.
Because that forces the city to have to...
Yes, and we can't do that. We cannot do that. I don't think that that's fair.
Are you saying like you're unable, we might be unable to have them agree not to make the city the object?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah. If the law says that the city's obligated to handle it.
I probably should have brought up, but I, I don't think the city's obligated to provide the same as they provide everybody else in town. So if there's two-day-a-week pickup for John Moore, there'd be two-day-a-week pickup for you guys. So if you picked it up six times, the other four times would be on you. That's the way I understand it.
And the applicants are trying to ensure that there'll be no, you know, impact, you know, through whatever they can in private hauling, you know, our, our ability to do that.
It's not compacted, right? You don't, you're not compacting, correct? You all right?
You know, I, I don't know how the extra functions remain is, I think the intent is to compact as much or, you know, wherever we can.
They're all compact.
Yeah.
Will you be testifying to the trees? Mr. Baumgartner? Yeah, so we'll, we'll go through the, the list. Jake, there was a question regarding, I'm just going in.
Yeah, of course.
Memorial Drive entrance, is that for you?
Um, in what regards the, the location, I don't remember.
Yeah, there was a question on Memorial Drive entrance, and the specific question was, I think, where?
I mean, as far as the Memorial Drive entrance is, I mean, I think part of the request, and I think it was really that the loading zone, we actually, along Memorial Drive, we do comply for vehicles to get in, however, along the Springwood Ave, just because the great, great difference has created that deviation for us. If it was on the same linear plane, we'd be able to comply, but because there's such a great difference between Springwood Ave and Memorial Drive and our two access points, that's what's driving that, that variance in our relief situation when it comes to vertical clearance.
A question about the height of the retaining wall, would that be for you?
So, yeah, it's a, it's a screening wall, it'd be six feet in height, that'll be fully CMU block, that will block all the lights. The lights will be at fourteen feet directed down from the canopy. So it's basically, you, you would have to be essentially standing on top of the wall in order to see some of the light that would be reverberating back up. It's not, wouldn't be measurable in any way.
So the secondary question was, would that, would there be light spill out or adverse light impact?
Yeah.
Okay. And then there was a question regarding the foot candle measurement in the garage, one foot candle allowed. Do you know what exactly we're proposing?
I, I don't have the exact number, I know it is within industry standards, though.
It is what?
Within industry standards. The intent is you want to have between five and ten within a parking garage.
Okay, and then there was...
Sorry, you said between five and ten foot candles?
Yes.
So it's like five or ten times?
No, 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 so a, a foot, a foot candle is very actually hard to see as individuals, between a one and two, it's actually really tough to see. A foot candle is essentially the amount of light given off by one candle one foot away. It's, it's tough for us as engineers to quantify us looking directly at a light, so it's the amount of basically generation given by this light. We talk about light generation, and that's what we're talking about. So if the naked eye had two foot candles, it's very tough to tell. There are certain requirements set forth, or certain standards set forth that engineers use as baselines. For example, in here's probably between forty and sixty foot candles, so if you were thinking about that, we're, you know, we're essentially to half to a third of that when it comes to within the actual garage, and the intent is to have that, you know, an even distribution of light.
But we don't know, we don't know how much we exceed the average.
Uh, I, I don't have that calculation, I'm sorry, in front of me right now. And, and we'll, we'll be able to ride that in a little bit.
But there isn't any spillage, so that externally you will not see that light?
Correct, but the, the intent is it's, you know, it's, it's a request, but the average within the parking lot does exceed that one foot candle. We'll get you that number to be exact, but there's no spill.
There was a question regarding the, the tree pit pits in the sidewalk, and is there enough room to walk into town?
Yeah, there, there is enough room, so essentially, there's seven and a half feet from the building to the front face of the curb, and there's another six inches of the curb. So the, the actual tree well itself will actually not impact the necessary flow, like, so it'll be ADA accessible basically throughout the entire frontage, having between, I think in certain areas, it'll have that full eight feet basically of clearance, and you'll have four feet at a minimum going across the, the front of...
So, so on Springwood Avenue, when we're walking on Springwood Avenue, it's four foot clear walking?
Yes.
No, not, the trees are not impacted?
Minimum.
Minimum?
Yep.
Is that, is that, is that a tree grate? Are you walking on a tree grate?
No, you would not, you'd be, clear space between, so we, we do have some planters in there, and they've been basically situated, so they don't not interfere with that, that situation, we have a tree grate and then the building. And the insorting ordinance does require us, or intends for us to be on the property line as best for possible, making sure we still have that public engagement as you can go all the way through along Springwood Ave.
And the tree pits are, where do they start at the curb or at the, the building?
Uh, they, they would essentially start at the curb.
Start at the curb?
Yeah, and come out.
So is it your position that our sidewalk width will A, comply with city requirements, and B, comply with ADA requirements, and C, most importantly, be functional, usable, and safe?
That's correct.
And so, but you do have some planters, but you're staggered with the tree grates?
Exactly, and tastefully staggered away to ensure that there's still pedestrian and ADA accessibility throughout, yeah, the Springwood Ave frontage.
Are you using tree grates or anything that can be walked on or rolled on with like a carriage or a chair, or is this a kind of a hard barrier where it falls into dirt?
I think the requirement was for us to actually have a physical barrier in those locations, so there's, is a small extension.
So we need a lip, a gate, or is it a grate?
Yeah, there's a small lip.
Three lips, so it's four feet, because that's it, you can't go over that. And then I believe Mr. Henry had some questions on the survey.
Yes.
I will say that the grates look wrong.
You talk about lot seven oh five lots one, two, three, four, but there's, on the survey, they're showing another lot, lot five and lot five oh six, is that part of this application?
I can answer that. That, that's the parcel in Neptune. So, yes, it is, and we did notice for that, and we got the list from the city of, town of Neptune as well. So it is technically...
The reason I ask, because I try to follow the outside perimeter of this particular four lots, and it, it is so confusing because of the different, different lines that you have here, the different, again, I realize you didn't do the survey, didn't prepare the story.
What, what document are you looking at, just so I can follow along as well?
I think you're looking at the survey, correct?
I have the survey, June twenty-ninth, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two.
June ninth, twenty twenty-two?
Yeah.
In the area of confusion?
Can we bring up the survey?
I don't know. Yeah.
So I think the area you're talking about?
Well, part of my problem is that I refuse to take a magnifying glass to look at these.
No, that's fine, I'm trying to blow it up right now. So I think the area you're talking about is probably in this southerly location the property plan left, so what you're looking at is actually this dash line going through the property. That's actually the municipal border. That's shown, that's that block three oh six, lot five, that's located within town in Neptune.
Okay, so that's, that lot five is from the municipal border south?
Correct.
Okay. And is the municipal border the southern boundary of the four lots that you were talking about in your subdivision here?
No, the, the four lots within the town are located north of that border, but this one is part, it's all one parcel, and it's, it's located south. There's a small portion that we'll call it ten foot by a hundred and fifty feet, located, you know, in a different municipality.
Okay, and you just testified a few minutes ago that the storm sewer, this seven-foot culvert, I don't remember if my dimensions correctly, that's mainly in Neptune?
Yeah, so I, I testified to it being partially and more or less trying to straddle that municipal line, and what we've done in our, in our development is basically try to avoid that as much as possible as within five feet. So you can see it actually shown in the planner front, which was revised and resubmitted, it shows the da, two dash lines that essentially show the limits of that culvert.
Okay, so most of it's in Asbury Park, not, not Neptune?
And if you look at the global maps, essentially that, that line, the main trunk line, it's about seventy-two inches in line, essentially runs the entire property line to a certain point, probably, I think it's a couple thousand feet to the west, and essentially, you know, it's against being a collector, and the intent, it appeared to be more or less running the border of the, the two municipalities.
Yeah, but, but it's in Asbury Park and not in Neptune, except for that little corner of the southwest corner of that.
A portion, yes, it does.
I'm sorry?
A portion does come into Asbury Park.
Well, from this survey, the majority of it in connection with this application is in Asbury Park.
As, as it traverses through the property?
Yeah.
Yeah, because this is a larger line, yes, it's, yes.
That's the one that goes up to Wesley Lake, that's the...
Yes.
Okay. It's subterranean?
It's subterranean.
How big?
Uh, it's approximately three to four feet.
You know, what is it, a concrete, tight, you know, concrete tunnel?
Yeah, essentially, if you want to look at, it's a concrete vault essentially running, you know, the entire property line.
And what, you're, so you're not, no part of the building will be over it?
No.
Will parking area be over it?
There will be parking spaces over the top of it, yes.
And where does the, this wall that is being constructed in relationship to that?
It'll, it'll run the perimeter of the property line, so there'll be a small point here and there, I believe it's actually a ten-foot section on the southerly portion of the property, or we'll be proposing that wall. We'll make sure that that pipe is as much as possible kept structurally integrity, structurally sound as we install and do our necessary improvements on the site.
So I'll think of a slab, will you put over that? I'll think of a concrete slab.
I, I don't know.
Because there's going to be cars parked on there, is that what?
Yeah, so it'd be a typical section. If there's any additional reinforcements, we'll obviously ensure that it's done through our structural engineer, but, you know, we're not at that point, you know, we'll make sure You know, we'll make sure that, you know, it's not going to fall in on itself.
I was having trouble, as I said, I was having trouble following the perimeter of this thing.
It's challenging, yes.
Yes. And again, part of the conversation that we had was the property line limits as well as ensuring that we were showing this sewer line correctly.
And then there seems to be a gore between the Westley property line along Memorial and the right-of-way of Memorial. Correct?
I'm sorry, were you looking at exactly?
There seems to be a gore in this survey along the Westley boundary of this survey as it relates to these four lots and the Eastley boundary of Memorial Drive.
In particular, are you talking about?
Up in the left-hand corner.
Left-hand corner?
Right that, there you go.
This right here?
There and to the, right through that, that's it.
So that's actually a separate storm line that is collecting the Memorial Drive rainwater. So you can actually see, so it's not shown here all the way to the limits of the 72-inch pipe, but essentially it runs along that municipal line heading west as you planned, top left, sorry, upper left. And then these collect from the street runoff, directly tap into that existing manhole that's on site.
And that's, those storm lines run into that culvert, right?
Yeah.
Okay. But there seems to be a...
This area here?
Yes, who?
That would be the county. It's the county right-of-way. So you can see as you go across, and actually, it's probably better if you look at the site plan. And this is, I think, part of the request and let it load.
I thought the county right-of-way was parallel at the, will you have your elevation, your spot elevations in the survey?
Not always.
No. So that's part of what's happening here, is that the right-of-way, it's irregular. And so as much as we are, as part of this going to be a dedication, we're trying to correct that. Basically, if we follow the intent of the ordinance, we could build basically into the right-of-way. The county didn't have something to say. We'd be able to basically be within a foot of the curb line there. But this area here is all county right-of-way.
Okay. So there's no problem with the county putting your driver there?
No, we've submitted an application. We've had initial conversations with them before this project even came in front of the board regarding access to and from the property with NJ Rail as well. So we're comfortable with the proposed access here.
Okay. And the property line of the four lots combined along the right-of-way doesn't seem to be very well defined. I had trouble trying to figure out where that was.
And which plan are we looking at? Is this still the survey?
I'm sorry?
Is this still the survey?
Yeah.
You're having troubles following?
Yeah.
And we tried to pronounce it as much as we could on the site plan. Just, we used a thicker line. We can, you know, help the conversation. We can make sure that that line is a little bit thicker.
That's part of the problem on that. Trying to figure out where the property line was along the right-of-way. And it gets down to this corner, and then it comes into the municipal boundary. Survey is really confusing.
It's just, it's not, the situation across Memorial Drive, it's just a variable width right-of-way. So it's not conventional when it comes to right-of-way widths. And part of that in our conversation with the county, as much as we can, we're going to try to correct that. So I can't testify to why that line is like that. That's years and years, sure, before I was even alive, how that situation was occurring. But we're, as much as we can, we're trying to make this more of a conventional parcel where we have a unified, as much as we can, unified right-of-way.
Okay. So these four lots, regardless of the configuration, are going to be combined into one?
That is correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board of this witness? Any questions from our professionals?
I do have a couple of questions. So Mr. Mardes, you indicated that you had spoken to the county about the access. Did you speak with them about the right-of-way?
Yes, that's actually indicated to us that they would want a dedicated at least 25, a 28-foot wide right-of-way from the center line. And so that's where we began this conversation and dictated a lot of how we laid out the site. So that was conversation one.
Okay, so perhaps to help the board, can you show with your arrow approximately? Why don't you show first the right-of-way line that you're talking about?
So essentially, what we're going to be doing is dedicating a portion similar to this, a small sliver, continuing basically what is the primary frontage where it's more conventional here at the Springwood Ave and Memorial Drive intersection, and then continuing that straight through. The county is going to keep their right-of-way in the location, basically where it's no longer 28 feet. They will continue to have that, where we then still comply with the zoning code. And then, at this point, I believe there's an indentation. We don't have the right to dedicate that, but that's essentially the right-of-way across Memorial Drive.
Okay, so that red line that you just threw in there, that's going to continue parallel to the building from the corner of Memorial Springwood?
Yeah.
That's where the dedication is?
Yeah, basically, that area, and if you're looking at the page north, would be dedicated to the county. It is shown on the survey, showing that dedication and a dotted hatch. It says C note 3. That's also shown there. So again, it's an odd shape to call it like almost a sawtooth to the property. We're going to be correcting that.
All right. And then there's a dimension there right in the middle of the red line. What's that dimension?
That is 4.9? Oh, sorry, 14.9.
Okay.
So we're talking about this one right here?
Yeah. So it complied with, where does it not comply with the 15-foot?
So it actually, basically from this line south. It would be from here south.
Okay. So anything beyond 15-foot on that?
Yeah. You can see, just because of the odd shapes.
So your expectation is you're going to have to do a dedication, you're going to comply anyway?
Exactly. But the application has been done, we haven't gotten that dedication through, so the request is four yards from now.
Okay. And your planner testified in the corner, if you go back to that south corner? The south corner? There's a rear yard setback request?
Yep.
Where's the area of the rear yard setback?
It's in this location here.
Okay.
Circling that, I'm just going to circle it in red on the plans. So it's this dimension here at 18.4.
Okay. And at what point does it get to 20 feet?
Essentially, we'll call it 10 feet beyond, so that would be right after the compact parking spaces. So I'm going to draw that same line. It's essentially a small configuration. So if you look at it from a grand scheme, it thinks would say about, you know, 80 to 90% of the building would comply with that setback.
Okay.
And then obviously, we did dedicate areas.
Continue down that corner. So it looks like the property jogs again?
Yep.
The line? That's compliant there?
Yep.
Where it jogs?
It's compliant, yes.
And then if you can go to the Springwood side? So the tree boxes, you indicated seven and a half feet is the...
From the curb?
Face of the...
Face of the curb? To the building.
Okay. And then the planter boxes are four feet?
Correct.
So that's three and a half feet?
From the face of the curb, so then you still have the curb as well, which is another .5.
But the planter box is six inches off the curb?
That is correct, yes.
And that's another four feet?
Yes.
So the planter box is four and a half feet off the curb?
Yeah, maybe to get that dimension exactly on the planter box, but...
So then it's three feet to the face of the building?
Yeah, we just want to make sure we're right with our clearance to the building.
Yeah. It's three, I'm sorry, it's three and a half feet.
Unless you make the planter boxes smaller, do you make them more rectangular?
And longer?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think there's any problem with us ensuring that there's four feet going to the smaller, you know, small planter box across the right-of-way.
Yeah, it's the soil volume that's important. So if you make the, if you're cutting the width, make it longer just to maintain the proper soil volume for trees. Would be done that way.
And we're going to ensure four feet. So if that comes through a three and a half foot, you know, or a three-foot tree grate, that's not a problem. They do come in those configurations.
And the other question I had is, it looks then like the only, the area of the building might have the right-of-way encroachments on the upper floors then is southwest corner.
Southwest corner, are we talking down in this location?
Yes.
Nope, that would, there's still the ability. There's no encroachment. Are we talking to the right-of-way?
Yes.
Nope, that will completely comply.
Okay. So in order for there's some discussion, maybe that's been addressed.
So I think the area we were talking about is actually along Springwood Ave. There was, I think, some inconsistencies between the plans regarding the overhang. That has been corrected.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, so testimonies, there are no encroachments from any of the upper floors as well?
That is correct.
Correct.
That's my question.
When you put that driveway in on Memorial, are you going to have to relocate any of the storm sewers?
No, not at this time. I think maybe one of the inlets may need to be reset, but it's not being relocated.
It appears from the survey, and again, driveway's not indicated on the survey, but it appears that your driveways would be right over that catch basin.
Yeah, and so whatever it ends up being is we're going to make sure that that catch basin still functions as it does today. So from a vertical standpoint, we may change the actual grade or the grade configuration, but it'll still be there in totality. The location is not changing generally as it sits on the street right-of-way now.
I just wondered whether that, the driveway might have to be shifted based on...
I think we'd probably move the drain before move the driveway because I think the access here from what the county directed us to have is this is, this is far as away from intersection we can be.
Professionals, any other questions? Go ahead.
Just a couple of quick points of clarification. You mentioned the LSRP involved, and just wanted to confirm that you can provide documentation that the site is suitable for infiltration?
Yep.
Under the proposed location?
We will provide that. We spoke in depth today with LSRP, confirmed that shouldn't be an issue. Infiltrations away from the areas that are being monitored, which are along Memorial Drive.
Okay. Regarding the tree grate, I understand that the tree grate itself will be ADA compliant?
Correct.
And can you provide a detail for that on the site plan?
We will.
And four feet of sidewalk will be maintained?
That is correct.
And that is the requirement, the ordinance requirement is a four-foot wide sidewalk. Regarding the survey, I know we had, I think it was our first comment?
Yes.
In the package we received, I remember seeing a file labeled as the survey. But every time I tried to open it, it was a text file. But I do see that one was submitted, so as long as I get a copy of that, we should be okay there. And then finally, this wasn't in our report, just something I had noticed somewhat recently. If you go to the survey on Memorial Drive, there's an existing utility pole in the upper hand, upper left-hand corner.
It's right here?
As we're talking here?
Yes. And then on the proposed conditions plan, it's labeled as to remain. It's in the middle of the sidewalk. It looks like there's four feet on it. You know, maybe you can confirm on either side to maintain that four-foot width. But it's just something I wanted to bring up to the board that, you know, it is, it is in the middle of the sidewalk. And I think it would look kind of odd and, you know, could have inhibited some of the dead rate circulation in that area. Is the, is it proposed to remain, or is that going to be relocated at all?
The intent would be for it to be relocated. I think we're going to have to have certain spacing from our building as well. We're going to have to work with the providers. I can't give any details on where it's going to be because they dictate quite a bit of that conversation. So as much as possible, we're trying to find and make sure we have proper separation, both from the sidewalk standpoint and then a building separation standpoint.
Okay.
There are certain OSHA requirements from spacings.
So would hopefully be moved towards the curb?
That would be the intent, yeah.
So that the distance between the spans would remain the same?
I'm not quite sure, but I think that would be our intent. We leave it to the utility providers.
Does the board have any thoughts on that?
Yep.
If you leave it to the utility provider, don't hold your breath. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. You really don't have control over that. But if you want that done within the next century, you better get it, application in about two years ago.
So what options do we have for that as a board to...
Well, I think the plans can be revised to show that the intent is to relocate the utility pole.
Okay.
Subject to approval from the provider?
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay? You okay with that note?
Is that a land post or?
It's like an electrical utility pole.
Anything else?
Is that something that probably...
Across the entire front.
I doubt that.
No, I think it's just the one. I think it's the other side. It actually is, it's the other side.
So it's along Memorial Drive?
Just along Memorial.
We have to rethink the trees.
We're going to, yeah. That's what street trees are for, is we try to keep them low. And we're going to, again, that's why we're working with providers. It's going to be a part of the conversation.
Any other questions of this witness?
I guess maybe this is one thing just for clarity, for the compact parking spaces, eight and a half is being proposed. It is pretty common what we're seeing for residential parking spaces, just for clarity. Your typical Honda Accord, it's about six feet in width. So there is the ability to open your doors. I do have a truck, and I park in an eight and a half-foot parking space. You can fit it. It's tight, but there is the ability to fit. Eight and a half-foot parking spaces too, it's really more suited for residential uses anyways. Essentially, it's, you know, a larger commercial space. We have like a nine-foot parking space to allow for customers to come in and out. Residential eight and a half is appropriate because people know about that. They're not going to be flying into the location. They know their destination. They know their parking space. They'll be able to pull slowly into their space and be able to maneuver as needed because they're going to be doing it every day.
James, what are your thoughts on that?
So eight and a half is, it's not terrible, oddly preferred, but eight and a half, three-man. The only concern I would say is that there, you know, the majority of people drive SUVs and trucks now. You mentioned the Honda Accord, but like, the majority of the cars are going to be SUVs. They should fit fine, just going to be tight. It's probably something that the residents have to think about when they want to move in. It shouldn't be too unreasonable. I'd be okay with it.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from our professionals?
I would say that we'll have to rethink what the tree, the street trees are along Memorial Drive with the overhead utilities along there. Because it looks like you'll have direct conflict with what's proposed, which are essentially red maples and honey locusts. You'll need something, I think, that's a much more narrow or growing habit for the tree.
Well, that could be, that could be a condition that's based on discussion with CCH.
It could certainly be coordinated with us as resolution compliance.
Okay. Any other?
Was it mentioned at the last meeting I remember? Is the park map also available? People who are patrons of the businesses on the front side?
That is correct.
So there are people using that on residence?
Correct, yes. And there was maybe, obviously, the stackers, essentially, so it's not for residents.
But there are designated spaces for those visitors then, right? Or is there any space?
It would be any space. We put together a plan for the areas that would be allowed for the commercial component, essentially located by the commercial uses with the, basically, the perimeter being outside a few EV parking spaces being set forth for residents.
Anything else from our professionals or from the board? Any questions from the public? Come on up.
Hello, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. I'm very curious about that southern lot where the municipal line goes through the lot. It kind of begs the question to me as to who has jurisdiction in that area? Have you applied to Neptune for any of these applications?
I'll explain, I'll explain. So the entire lot encompasses not only the four Asbury lots, but also the fifth Neptune Township lot. The applicant has made a, submitted a letter to Neptune Township if they have any concerns, and they received a reply back. It's part of the board's package that says that they do not have any objections and they are not required to go to Neptune Township.
Okay, great. But then that also begs the question is to, how do you divvy up the tax payments?
That's between Neptune Township and Asbury Park as to how that, how that works. I don't know if there's already an agreement in place with respect to that.
Yeah, I'm wondering...
But that's generally, the bulk of this is going to be in Asbury Park, and the bulk of the improvement is going to be charged by Asbury.
Absolutely, absolutely. But shouldn't there be an interlocal agreement to establish a fair division of tax revenue as part of this application?
I don't, I don't believe so.
I mean, and the city and the township work, and I just, I don't know the method of the formula.
No, I mean, they assess their property for what development is on it.
They agree?
And Asbury Park assists its park, so.
Do we know that or is that, that just conjecture?
That's, that's how it happens. That's, that's how it happens.
So currently there are two tax bills generated for that lot, for sure?
Yeah, that's how, that's.
That's how it works. Can I say, can I say for sure? No. Nobody can say for sure without seeing the bill.
That's what I'm saying.
But yes, that's generally how it happens. I have tons of clients of my, my own who have lots that straddle lines and they get taxes.
Yeah, because that, that's kind of relevant to the application since we're making improvements on the Asbury side and Neptune would be getting a part of that, so, okay, anyway.
No, Neptune will not get a part of the improvements on, in Asbury unless there's some other agreement.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to go back to the, the Springwood Avenue side there with the, the setback and the tree line and the sidewalk and all that. From what I'm hearing is there's about seven feet from the building to the curb. And now you're proposing to put trees in a part of that area with tree wells. Is there a requirement to put trees on that block frontage?
There are, yes.
Yes, it said yes.
There's a requirement?
Yep, it's part, it's part of the redevelopment.
And would you say that a priority for the sidewalk would be pedestrians or trees?
I mean, it's functioning as a sidewalk for pedestrians.
Okay.
It's part of, it's part of an overall streetscape plan. It incorporates both sidewalk and landscaping, so it's kind of almost one, you know, conversation. It's like if you have a pedestrian walking down just seven and a half feet of just pure concrete. It's a little different than having a seven and a half foot concrete with a breakup and you have like a landscaping and shade above. It's part of the streetscape plan. It's required.
So you're saying every place there's a tree, there'll only be three feet for people to walk by?
We clarified that there will be a minimum of four feet provided for locations throughout the frontage on Springwood Avenue.
Four feet?
Four feet.
With part of that four feet being over the top of the street grate?
No.
No?
No, we will, we will comply.
Okay.
Make sure that there's four feet of sidewalk area.
Okay. Just from, from a logical point of view, would you agree that it would make more sense to just eliminate the trees and put two foot wide flower planter boxes along there?
I, I think it's the same. I actually.
It's the same? How would that be the same?
From a sidewalk access standpoint, I like the trees. A better person wanting to requirement from redevelopment. Planning to provide canopy and shade breakup, I think that's a huge conversation. You walk a lot of sidewalks, basically street canopy trees provide a relief for pedestrians walking through this area. Again, when you look at this in the eight way situation, it's going to help bring people to and from the train station.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Do people walk single file, one behind each other typically?
I, I don't know if I can talk about how.
No? Or do people walk side by side typically if they're walking?
Depends, depends on the group I have.
Okay, what's, what's on that, what's on the face of that building on that first floor? Are there commercial storefronts there or what's actually on that frontage?
So frontage along Springwood Avenue, that actually has basically ports of our driveway access point, a commercial space, and then the resident's lot.
Oh, there is a commercial space?
Yes.
Right? You just said that?
Yep.
Oh, okay. And is there a door into that commercial space?
There is, yes.
Does it open out or in?
In.
It opens in? I don't think that's code. I think it has to open out, doesn't it?
I don't, I don't know building code. I defer to the architect.
That's something that comes up.
Well, I'm trying to figure out if there's any doors being opened into the public right away.
So from an access standpoint, ADA requires a certain threshold when it comes to width and we're going to be providing that regardless of.
No, I'm asking about doors opening into the public right away.
And I'm clarifying it because ADA requires an area regardless of the swing of the door to be provided. And we will be providing that. It's required by, it's basically a federal code and I believe local code as well.
Okay, all right. And you still think it's a good idea to have trees and tree pits?
I do. I think redevelopment speaks about it and I think what we're doing is in line with that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the public? I have to, I have to admit that, that, I mean, I, I pass by that area practically every day. I think that it's personally, I think it's deceptively, looks large. I can't imagine that there could be four trees there and a driveway. So I tend to agree with Mr. Baumgartner that it, it just seems like there's, having trees in addition to a sidewalk, in addition to a driveway seems excessive for that short of a space for me. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, that, that passes by there every day. But it just seems like there's, there's, there isn't that much room in order to be able to have people walk, have trees and have a driveway in.
Indoors?
Indoors. I agree, I, I agree with you. I, I'm, I'm struggling with that. But I'm certainly not a planner. I'm certainly not a landscape architect, but it's just a feeling that I have.
What is, what is the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan called? Trees how many feet apart?
One tree every 50 linear feet of frontage.
How many feet of?
How much furniture do we even have on that? From the railroad track to the corner can't be.
148 linear feet.
Really? We would need three, yes, if we're losing four. I don't know. Yeah, we can eliminate ones.
That's right.
It's 300 feet long.
So it's, it's long. Wow, it's long.
And 150 feet deep.
It's deceiving. Okay.
And I think we, four are proposed, three are required if it's the pleasure.
Yeah, no, it, it should be whatever the, whatever the redevelopment plan states is, is fine.
If the redevelopment plan says they only need three.
Three, right. Okay. Any, okay, you have another, another witness?
Thank you. And real briefly, I'd like to call Anthony, Architect of the Previously Sworn. There's just a couple of other questions that some of the board members have, but we'll provide answers to them.
Okay.
Anthony, just speak your name.
That is Anthony C. Vandemar Jr. And again, you were under oath at prior hearings and you agreed to be under oath this evening. Is that correct? That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, so Anthony, just very briefly, I know there was a question on regarding the breakdown of the affordable units. And I think you said yes when the attorney indicated, so you, you're okay with what the attorney indicated, correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct. And the question of whether there's a studio or a one bedroom. Apparently the way it reads is that it's either or. But again, whatever the board would like to mandate, we will reach a.
We will certainly comply with the city's regulations.
That's correct.
I know there was, Councilman Clayton had a question regarding why are we having commercial space on the second floor? Do you have any information on that?
It, it, it is a conditional, not even a conditional, it's a permitted use within the redevelopment plan. And the owner thought that providing office space at the second floor, that there would be a need for that. So it was part of the program of the project and it's also part of the redevelopment plan in language, so we are complying with that.
Does it make it, was it harder to incorporate it than not to incorporate it? Like what would be the pros and cons?
No, actually, it's, it's a lot probably easier to provide than residential. You know, you could probably put in an additional 10 residential units in that location. So I don't really think that it was a point of harder or, or, or less than hard. I think that this is something that the ownership actually wanted.
Would that do your parking if you had more residential units?
It would probably, it would increase the number of, of parking spaces required.
And what, you would not be able to comply or?
Well, it, it would probably, it would trigger a balancing of the whole entire parking garage once again, but you know, when, we had a program and we then designed to the program that was designed on the floors above. If I had 10 more residential units there, I probably would have had to provide more mechanical parking or less commercial or retail space on the first floor. So this stuff all gets balanced, one against the other. Good project you see here.
I know there were some questions about parking and is, is parking going to be charged or do you have any information in that regard?
Parking is, is not going to be charged. Parking is going to be with the residential units themselves. And just going back to the parking stall dimensions, the majority of the shared parking stalls, just to correct some, some testimony, we do have nine foot parking stalls in, in at least 50% of the shared parking spaces. So that's a nine by 19 fully compliant parking stall in the yellow north page here, as you can see on the monitor.
And so refresh my memory, do we have parking, is there enough parking for each unit or no?
Yes, yes.
So you will charge, there will be no assigned parking, the first, you come in first, come first served?
First come, first served, correct. Yes, and if we can just go back to the discussion once again about the, the size of the trash and refuse room. Again, the owner has agreed of certainly not going back to the city at, at any point for any additional carding services. But as mentioned previously, this is going to be an independent carding service that takes away the trash and recycling. We had agreed at, at the moment at, you know, three times for the trash itself and then twice for recycling per week. You know, if, if the board still should see that this room should expand, you know, something has to give at that point. And then retail space number two inherently would just get smaller. So again, we think the room is properly sized with the compactor. If the board sees fit that it needs to be an additional 200 to 300 square feet, we can reduce the retail number two by that dimension.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I think those were the gist of the questions at least that I had. I tried to write down as many that we can, that were from the board members.
Wasn't there something about putting more color on the west pane?
I'm, I'm glad you asked. Okay. So originally.
I think the word was pop, pop of color, correct?
The, the, yes. And the original design intent of the project, we had talked about a vertical element and we had talked about pedestrian plaza at the corner. That had to be a minimum of 15 by 15. We went back and forth about the horizontal element, you know, with the indentation of the pedestrian plaza at the corner. So we went back and looked at this a little bit further, not only for the color itself, but we looked also at a vertical element that Commissioner Henry was talking about originally. So, you know, we, we felt in, in one sense that we, we did satisfy the redevelopment plan kind of language of what the intent was. But also to go a little bit further, we looked at this a couple of different ways now. We talked about a vertical element, so we did bring up the corner, open element. And then also what we did was in the reveal of the corner.
Have we seen?
This is an exhibit, by the way. This is again, this is not as part of your package. This is something that's just an exhibit in kind of indirect line to what Commissioner Henry had requested and we studied this for the past month. So this is the original color assemblies with a vertical element at the corner with pedestrian plaza still remaining with no roof cover because I thought that would be best. This is what it would look like in the evening with the raised corner. And then we have studied, you know, the corner a little bit further by actually lightening the color palette with more color pop. So we went to a, an orange brick modular masonry with the blue reveal in the corner. And again, you have the blue that peeks out, you know, at the balcony spaces. And that would be the proposed exhibit would be a, a kind of a brighter color change and a raised element at the corner to respond to Mr. Henry's questions about the vertical element.
If the board was inclined to, to want that?
That's correct.
Can you toggle, if you would, between your darker and your lighter colored brick in the daytime shot?
Yes.
Sorry to be so specific. So this is the darker.
This is the darker version. However, the corner, we have added color to the corner. The original design, if I can show everybody the original design, had masonry on the inset at the corner. And then we actually changed the material to match the inset of the balconies at the corner now to create this colored element with a raised vertical. So this, this is the original color palette.
Is that a metal panel?
That is a cement board panel.
Cement board.
Yeah. And the new proposed colors with greater emphasis of the orange and the blue with the elevated corner here.
Personally, I think the addition of the color on the corner is, is nice. I think something to differentiate it a little bit. It pulls it out. My one, you know, for your consideration, I'm curious if these side panels in the blue could match your rear panel. Just because the, as you're coming down the street, what you're not going to see is the face, so the sides will help. I think if it, it, it will draw attention to that, I think, and tie it because those blue insets exist all the way down the building.
That's correct.
Right, so I think as, as you're moving along the street, I think you're more likely to see the perpendicular side.
The return?
Yeah, so if you would consider that, I think that would be all that's needed. With, with this to kind of pull everything together and some commonality along the facade. Well, both differentiating and common in a way.
I, if, if, if the board would make this a condition of approval, I would certainly agree to that.
What about the thoughts about the, the lighter brick as opposed to the other?
I prefer the lighter brick. Yeah, I think, I'm not sure if it's the lighting of the rendering or the lighting of the.
I, I, you know what it was is that, I think the original intent was that the, the white portion of the facade was supposed to be the star of the show behind this kind of, kind of muted color palette. And then now you have just, you know, a lot of different colors kind of put together here that I, I think orange and blue actually work very well together, so.
Yeah, I think this is.
I, I agree. This is an improvement. The color palette is more vibrant.
And the, and the, the night, the night version of that?
Yes.
I really like how that, that, that shows because that, you're, once you're coming down Springwood, to come to that corner in the evening or on the sides, I, I like that. Yeah.
Hey Jeff, I don't think we marked that in. Should I?
No, I think we should mark that in.
I think we are in A4, is it?
I had A3.
I had A3 as well.
That, that lighting on all of the, the top of the corners and just to make sure that.
What do you have for A3?
I have color rendering on the site plan. It's fixed to A3.
Okay.
All right, so Anthony, can you just, let's mark this as A4. Just identify what A4 is.
We have, it could either be two, three A4s. Two A4s or one A4, one A5. One could be the daytime revised colors with revised corner. And then the, the A5 could be the dusk rendering with the revised color palette and corner.
And are they both prepared by your office?
That's correct.
And just for the record, Mr. Lambert's point from the earlier meeting, what's the real color? What, what, what name of colors are we using?
Well, it's not the Booth Bay Blue that was just recently discussed. This, this one's called Evening Blue, which is slightly darker than the Booth Bay Blue.
And are those, are marking A4 and A5, are they dated?
They, they are fresh off the presses today, 7/11.
And that tree that's there is, that's going to be real. That's going to exist, that tree in the middle, that's the center.
That's the intent.
With the uplighting, okay?
Is it downlighting under the white portion? Because the masonry first floor seems to be lit up. Is that just from the lights on the...
That's just from the lights on the building and it's downlighted.
And they're just downlighting, yeah?
That's correct.
Although it looks like it's lit above windows.
That's probably from the interior lights, but then there's also uplighting.
There's uplighting at the corner, at the base.
And Irina, we will make sure that you get a copy of A4 and A5.
Yes, please.
So Mr. Vandermark, I did have a question, if you don't mind. So we're looking from this perspective, on the left side, we have the spring...
Springwood.
Springwood side. And the, it wasn't, I was sure when we were looking at the plan view on the engineering drawing, it's that front face of the wall. Is that seven and a half feet from the front face of the curb?
That's correct.
Okay.
Seven and a half feet, eight feet to the outer curb line.
So it might actually be inset slightly. When we're looking at the plan, it wasn't, because as you can see, the second and third floors are in portions of the fourth floor forward of that building line to the street. So I was just wondering if we're actually, might have a better situation for pedestrian traffic on that side because that first floor is set in slightly.
First floor at the moment is currently designed at property line though. The white portions that you see in the upper part of the building is a two-foot bay projection into the right-of-way, which are going to require a franchise. The redevelopment plan permits up to five feet of cantilever into the right-of-way, so to answer that question.
Okay.
We're at zero outline plus two.
That contradicts the prior testimony.
The prior testimony, yes.
But thank you for clarifying that.
What, I'm going south on Memorial from the corner. You have a brick facade storefronts there.
Yes.
What percentage of that?
Yes, at the moment of filing, it was at 29%. But our last conversation was, we were certainly going to open up those window openings, you know, to increase the blazing at both the Springwood Avenue facade and then also Memorial Drive. Now, a lot of these facades at the base do not have, you know, retail and/or lobby. A lot of these are different kind of functions of the building. But we will put translucent glazing at those locations. But again, as I testified to previously, when you had asked that question, that I will expand the window openings at the base of the building.
Okay, so that's what you're doing?
Yes.
So that facade continue on?
Yeah, you'll get a really nice kind of even ribbon of window opening at the building base, which kind of falls in line with, you know, the language in which redevelopment plan wants between base, middle, and top.
Does the brick stop there or does it pick up again as it goes further south?
The brick picks up as you go further south. So that there is an alternating pattern between, you know, the white touching ground. And this is all within our property now because, again, of the setback due to the right-of-way dedication.
So the white clothing is not into the right-of-way on Memorial?
Not at all.
Any other questions?
Are you certain about that?
Yes.
Okay, because when you get, kind of narrows together the southwest corner. And if it's two more feet, do we have that two feet at the very southwest corner of the survey?
If it slightly touches, we could pull it back.
You know, I mean, I just want to know. You have the ability to do that, I just...
I do.
You got two feet.
I do. Actually, the, you know, what happens, the building stops short of the actual property line, so we should still be within our property boundary there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Anything else?
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if it's you or somebody else. Okay, so go back to the 21 studios, 26 one-bedroom, 41 two-bedroom, four three-bedroom. But you have listed many one-bedroom and den, two-bedroom and den. And the one-bedroom and den, square footage is almost the same as the two-bedroom. The two-bedroom and den is almost the same square footage as the three-bedroom. So these two bedrooms and dens really going to be three-square footed and you're beating the parking system?
Well, that's not the intent at all.
I know it's not the intent, but is that what's going to happen?
The reason why you actually, technically it's a den is because it doesn't have light and air. It doesn't have windows. So, you know, you have sometimes, you have space that's left over in a floor plan that's at a... In this building in particular, it's a very awkward shape. You have a lot of space that's kind of inboard of an exterior wall system. So these dens really technically can't be used as a bedroom by code, okay? They can be used as an office.
Okay, as long as that's part of the...
Yeah, you can't, you need two means of, you need two means of ingress egress for a bedroom.
Okay.
So you have to have a door.
Part of the resolution, I have no problem with that.
It's a uniform construction code requires that. It stops someone from using it as a bedroom, but it's illegal.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public on this testimony?
Yes.
Thank you, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Could you put up one of the architectural renderings there? I like the one that showed the northeast corner, I think it would be, like two removed from where you just were. There was a nice picture, like from the railroad side.
We have the railroad side, and then we have the...
Yeah, that one there, yeah, blow that one up for a second. Yeah, I mean, this kind of exemplifies what I'm going to bring up. And I'm wondering, once again, why there's no architectural treatment of the top edge of the building via a cornice or a parapet wall to indicate the top of the building? It's just a square edge, effectively. Any reason why you don't have cornices anywhere on this building?
It's the return of modernism.
Yeah, this building is a contemporary building in nature.
Contemporary?
It's contemporary in nature, and it does not require to have a cornice. It's not something that fits the potential.
Well, a lot of things aren't required, but wouldn't it be nicer with a nice cornice at the top?
No.
Okay.
Any other question?
Would you be willing to put cornices on the building to make it nicer?
No.
No? Okay. What does the development plan call for in terms of architectural standards?
Is it a question for me?
Yeah, yeah, you're the architect.
It requires a building base, a building middle, and a building top.
Right.
It does not specify.
And a top, what constitutes a top, an endpoint, right?
A top floor.
Via a cornice?
Not necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have no further witnesses. I have a two-minute summation at your convenience.
Okay.
Well, we have to open a public comment if there are no other questions.
We didn't close questions.
We didn't, we didn't open, we didn't open questions.
Isn't that what we wanted?
He did, you're right. So now we're going to open for public comment? Can I get a motion? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. Mr. Beekman?
Yep, Mr. Baumgartner, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, absolutely. You know, normally I'm a big fan of following the plan, you know, whatever the plan is, redevelopment plan. But there are some cases where it just does not make sense. And this edge of the building to the north along Springwood Avenue makes no sense at all. There's just not enough room to cram all that stuff onto a seven-foot strip of concrete between a building and a curb. That's a perfect spot where you should really just put like little two-foot-wide planter boxes along the curb and leave lots of concrete for people to walk by and not get smacked by a door opening into the public space. I would say you really should eliminate those trees and allow maximum space for people to walk. That's a major transition between east and west, right? It's common sense. So that's my first comment. The second is what I just brought up, and that's the architecture. You know, whether something's contemporary or not really is not relevant. Buildings traditionally have components, a bottom, a middle, and a top. And the top usually stops your eye from like just floating off into space. And that seems to be the trend these days with these box-like structures, right? Right angles, they're easy to build. And even a contemporary building is benefited a lot by having traditional architectural components. And a cornice is one of those things, as I mentioned. A parapet wall is one of those things, or a soffit and fascia is one of those things. Makes it look less like just a box, basically, a factory kind of construction. So that's my two comments. The north street frontage, you know, picture this. Five foot is the accepted modern-day standard for a minimum walkway width. That's so two people can walk side by side, and that assumes on ground with space to either side. So you have room for arm swing. Two people walking side by side, and their feet are up against the edges, and there's room for their arms to swing, okay? So now, you're cramming this down to three feet, or even three and a half. That's just not enough space when you're up against the building on one side, and two people can't possibly walk side by side if you're walking with a companion. I've heard ADA mentioned, yes, the minimum ADA standard is three feet. That's for a doorway to put a wheelchair through. That has nothing to do with a public sidewalk, essentially, and making it comfortable for pedestrians. Think of pedestrians now coming at each other both ways in pairs. It's just not going to work. You need to do something with that north sidewalk there and make it more people and pedestrian-friendly, regardless of what the plan says. This is a case where this is an anomaly, where you only have seven feet to work with. Thank you.
Any, can I get a motion to close public comment?
Thank you, I'm on my way.
Does anybody have any thoughts, and I mean, this is going to be just discussion at this point. Does anybody have any thoughts about the, having the four-foot sidewalk in addition to the trees, the tree boxes? Or go towards the direction of the rectangular tree box so that it's not so much in the space?
What I would say is that it's consistent with the next block.
That it is consistent?
Where there are four-foot and the size of the sidewalk. So if you're looking for consistency...
No, that's what I'm looking for.
Then...
Then no, that it's keeping it the way it is.
I would agree with, for the area that it's in, it doesn't seem like, it's not different. It's not like it's, it's all shrinking down.
Yeah.
Maybe three trees is better than four, depending on where the doors are to the building. So you're not constantly going left, right, left, right, avoiding obstacles. But I think the four-foot, as long as it's in four feet, I think that's fine.
Okay, so I think that, I think that perhaps we can agree on the three trees as opposed to having the four spaced appropriately to not interfere with doorways that are coming in and out?
We want the vertical element.
And the vertical element that we have, are we okay with that? That was proposed?
I like it.
I'd like it as well.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I would request is for the side return panels on the blue-colored balconies to match the light ones.
That's fair.
Yep. I'm sorry, side panels to match blue, got it?
Is it the opposite term or the side term?
Evening blue, Kevin.
Yes.
It should. All, basically the whole sort of...
I didn't want to incur your ire. It would be nice if it's kind of a uniform cladding on the inset of... It's only the, only the large balconies have the color, right? The small...
Well, all of them.
All of them.
All of them that appear.
Yeah, in one of your renderings, it seems that there's just white on the small, on the... There's like a double size and a half size, right?
To my knowledge, all of them.
Do you have some conditions, Mr. Beekman, that we might want to talk about?
Yeah, so, notes here. One of the conditions that was testified to tonight was to increase the ground floor window glass area, to increase it from what's existing, proposed 29%.
Right, they testified that they would do that.
Right.
Translucent glazing.
With, right, with glazing as well. You can't see.
Right, right. And that would be the same with the garage doors, we had requested that in the past.
Agreed, correct.
So that's the same there?
Yep. Street, do we want street numbers on the doors of every unit on the street side?
Do we? What was that, Daniel?
I don't know if it was in one of yours. Street numbers on the door of every unit on the street side are not provided. And I think the plan provides, requires...
Requires it?
Number.
Well, if it requires it, then...
I mean, I think this is something that we can certainly agree to. I mean, we'll have the retail signage with the name of the retail, and we can put the address right underneath it.
I think that we have to include something about the refuse, like we'd spoken about, that the city will take, I mean, that it is private. And if something changes with that, that there's no additional, any incremental work for the city beyond what's required.
Well, I think we need to add to that, it shall be compacted.
Yes, shall be.
Shall be compacted.
You're right.
And that it will be addressed by a private hauler beyond what the city...
Yes.
May have to provide.
May have to, right. And we'd also spoken that the, about the affordable housing, that it was one-bedroom versus studios, whatever the ordinance is, the city ordinance that you would comply with, whatever that is.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So it shall be both the city ordinance and UHAC requirements.
Yes.
Garage doors I have here shall be closed between 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM. That was testified to.
Well, it would be if that's when your retail closes.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Trash hauling shall be from the interior and not from Memorial Drive. That's right, was testified, correct. Thirty-six spaces shall be dedicated solely to residential units. Correct?
That has been revised with the parking count, so it would be 32 now, and that specifically relates to the mechanical parking spaces.
Provide adequate bike storage.
Yes, I think that we've come to that, yes.
And the applicant shall obtain any approvals from the city for encroachments of the upper floors that extend into the right-of-way. And obviously, the applicant shall also get whatever approvals that might be required by the Monmouth County plan. Those are the notes that I have.
Anybody have anything else that we might have missed?
Yeah, one comment I'd like to make concerning the perimeter landscaping in the eastern side along the railroad track and along the southern side there. As I recall the planting plan, you've got the shrubs in a straight line. Is there some way you can break that up? It looks like a fence post with hair on it. You know, to screen the wall and the railroad from... You know, just to screen the, the wall and the railroad from the parking lot, it's fine, but kind of maybe stagger the shrubs in such a way so that it's not so linear?
Absolutely, but, but are we talking about in between our retaining wall or our, our property line wall and the railroad itself? Or are we talking about on the inside of our retaining wall and the parking space?
Both, both. You know, I think, I'm not concerned, it looks ugly in both places. And, you know, I mean, I understand the purpose behind it, I'm all for it, but there, there must be some way we can make it look better.
Yeah, yeah, well, we, we can certainly stagger them, and then we can, we can change species type.
That sounds, that sounds good.
You would then want to delegate that to us? Have to work with the applicant on that.
I would certainly think so.
So which trees are these we're talking about?
Essentially, all the street trees.
All the street trees, okay. Yeah, I was actually, Brian pointed out that I didn't bring up that the street trees, the type shall be coordinated with CCH.
But there are those, and also this, these plantings that.
That include the other plantings as well.
Yes.
All the permanent trees, effectively, street trees.
And also Doug pointed out that with the utility pole, that you'll comply with making an application to move, relocate that utility pole on Memorial Drive, subject to the approval from the utility company.
Anything else from anyone? If not, can I get a motion to approve this application with the conditions that were just mentioned?
So move.
Sure.
I have motion vice, Daniel Sanomeo, and a second by Officer Platon. Mayor John Moore.
No.
Councilwoman Officer Platon.
Yes.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes, again, I, I listened to Warner's comments, and I think they're well-taken, but we've come so far with this application already that I think it's, it's too much to ask to change at this point. This is, this is something that should have been done at the initial review, and, but Warner's point is well-taken, and I will vote for it in spite of my misgivings.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, and Eric Gallit, I have to vote.
Yes, and I am thrilled to see an affordable housing development happening. It's just, we need it so badly.
And Daniel Sanomeo.
Yes.
And finally, Barbara Crisell.
Yes.
Can I, I'd like to say that this is a very important project because it's a gateway.
Yes.
And we waited a very long time to start to developing that area of the city. And so I, I thank you for your creativity and for listening to the board and being able to make, being flexible, and, but I think that this is just going to be a very, very significant building, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I appreciate your time and your efforts and your patience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Can I just have one, one more item before everybody leaves? Not for the applicant, but for the board and the, as well as the professionals. I'd just like to mention that Irina, today is her last day as our board secretary, and I'd like to thank her for all of her hard work and dedication that she's given us over this time. We'll miss you. We'll miss you very much. Thank you.
Who do I call now?
Mayor, I already asked you if she was changing herself, and then she said no.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
On my favor.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.